Okay, so we're gonna get started. As usual, I would remind everyone in the room, if you have a cellphone, you can turn it off for silence, please. So I will call to meet, to order, the biennial budget meeting for the city of Oregon City. Katie, you want to call a roll, please?
Committee member Gordon.
Here.
Committee member Shaw.
Here.
Committee member Mangleford.
Here.
You phone, committee member Christopher.
Here.
Committee member Johnson.
Here.
Committee member I.
Here.
Committee member McCall.
Here.
Committee member O'Donnell.
Here.
And committee member Gifford is here, just that way, and then Mayor Holliday.
Here. Okay, do we want to go around the room and introduce staff?
That'd be great, Mayor, yes, please.
Okay.
Or actually, I think, because I'll make mention of the staff, but what we could do is just, we just took the role. It'd be nice for each of the, we've got a couple of new committee members, for each person, just give a quick background of the, on the committee.
Okay.
Ray Gordon, so Ray, if we could start with you, and you could just introduce yourself and tell a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in the committee.
Darn it, but you could start with somebody else, and I could just piggyback up what he said. I've always been interested, you know, I worked for Clackamas County Tourism for ten years, and lots of that was, a lot of budget and the transient room tax and stuff, and, and being in that environment, and then now, as a self-employed person, that showed me some, I had some interest that way, because of my background. And I used to, years ago, I used to be a county receivable manager, credit and collections, so.
They call you, I never called you.
Mr. Christopher.
My name's Tim Christopher, I've lived in Oregon City since 2001. Had my masters in political science, have four boys I'm raising in Oregon City, and assistant coach to the Oregon City pioneers, God help me.
Good.
I'm Dane Johnson, I'm a controller for Waste Connections, this is my first year doing this. Looking forward to helping out the community I live in, and that was kind of the basis of why I'm here, and excited.
Mr. McCall.
Oh, I thought we were just doing new ones, not old ones. I'm Joanne McCall, I live here in Oregon City, I've been here since 2002. I have about thirty-five years of accounting and budgeting experience. And I love budgets, and wanted to be on the committee to find out what's going on in Oregon City.
Mr. Gifford.
I'm William Gifford, small business owner in Oregon City. Been on the Budget Committee for years, took a hiatus last term, and was not on the committee, and I'm happy to be back.
Thank you, Budget Committee member, so, yes, we've got Joanne and Tim have been here, and Dane and Ray and William are all new, with William's experience, and I'm just really impressed with the quality of the folks that we have coming out from the, from the community to help us out. A lot of finance-oriented folks, and some folks with masters degrees, and business operators and all of that. So, super pleased about that, thank you for volunteering your time along with our commissioners, and for folks on the camera that are watching by camera that'd like to know more about your commissioners, you can check in the first and third Wednesdays for the business meeting of the commissioners each month. So I'd like to, Mayor, as you said, there's quite a few folks in the audience that are department heads, and also other staff from departments, that all did an amazing job of compiling their individual budgets, and so I want to give credit to them, there's quite a few of them, you might get a chance to talk to some of those folks as they come up during the meeting. I would also like to point out those specifically, my teammates over here in finance, we have Maria McElveen, who's the deputy finance director, and special credit to Maria, because when we came onboard, she's the one that masterfully reorganized this document, and made it eligible for National Award Program. And with her is Ryan Bradyhoff, who is the management analyst for our department, and he was instrumental in our chart of accounts restructuring this year, and putting together a lot of the numbers for the budget. And Aaron Wilkie's our senior accountant, who makes sure that all the operations are working well while we're working on the budget, and also comes in and checks and makes sure the numbers are all square for us, and helps us out in a lot of ways. So this is a great team, I really appreciate it, guys. With that, if I may, I'd just like to go ahead and go through the agenda briefly. So you should all have the Budget Committee agenda, and we've just taken roll call and done introductions, and the mayor is also, he's the mayor and also the chairperson of the Budget Committee last cycle. We need to elect a chairperson, and also a secretary, that's required under state budget law. The secretary job, I'll assure you, is not as hard as it may sound, because the city recorder's office does all the work in compiling the minutes from the meeting, so the secretary can just support in reading and making sure those are accurate. Then we have a period for public comments in general to start off with the budget, and then the city manager, Tony Conkle, will review the city commission goals, and then will approve the minutes from the last Budget Committee meeting, because, and we prepare those minutes after the meeting adjourns, so it takes a couple of years. And then, city manager Conkle will present the budget message, and as you're probably all aware, that's a function of law as well, where the budget message is presented, and then the committee is officially allowed to deliberate on the budget document. From there, we'll have a quick, I imagine, public hearing on state revenue sharing, also a function of law that I'll explain. And I believe in the last cycle, we kind of had questions through the budget message, and I'll let Tony speak to that if he'd like. But if needed, we can go through section by section on the budget by department, and the department heads can come up here and answer questions if Tony and I aren't able to answer them. And then the last part is, numbers ten and eleven on the agenda are approval of the budget document, and approval of the property tax rate, both required under Oregon law, and the language that you see there is actual motion language that you could use. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to you, Mayor, for election of a chairperson and secretary.
Okay, so I would open nominations for chair.
I'd like to make a nomination of Mayor Dan Holliday as chair of the Budget Committee.
Second.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we can, we can do that by acclamation, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, moving on, secretary.
All right, move for Nancy I to be secretary, please.
Second.
I just don't know what kind of responsibility this is.
So again, the city recorder's office prepares the minutes, and the secretary is responsible. At some point, we'll get an email, so do these look good to you?
Oh, I think I can do that.
Okay, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries, moving on, public comment, do we have anybody with public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Review the city commission goals, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, good evening, Budget Committee, Mayor and Commissioners. So just a little bit of an update on the 2017-2019 goals and priorities that the city commission adopted. So, we moved to this biennial budget to coordinate better with when city commission elections happen, new city commissioners come on in January, and then in late January, we hold a goal-setting retreat with, with the commissioners. And it's an opportunity for all the commissioners to get together, talk about what kind of goals they have, priorities, projects, investment, where they'd like energy devoted for staff for the upcoming biennium budget that we prepare. So we go through the goal-setting process with the commissioners, they identify the projects that they'd like to see accomplished, the goals, if we need to amend any of those, and then they adopt those. And that's that booklet that you see in front of you, they've identified five goals, cultivate an environment for successful economic development, address critical facility needs, enhance the livability of the community, pursue opportunities to increase transparency and encourage citizen participation, and maintain fiscal health and long-term stability. And underneath, underneath each one of those goals are specific projects that helped implement one of those goals. Once the commissions adopted their goals, we as staff then take that back, and then we start to prepare a budget to implement those, and that's what we've been working on, is preparing that budget to not only achieve the goals and priorities of the commission, but also the other day-to-day operations that we do on a daily basis as a full-service city. And so the draft biennium budget that you see before you tonight is a culmination of that work, and, so really, if there, you'll see as we go through the presentation today, some of these goals, specific projects underneath these goals will be highlighted. They may need additional revenues, expenditures to accomplish those, or investments that'll be necessary in order to complete those. And as we move through, we'll highlight some of those, and be happy to answer any questions about the goals that the commission has adopted.
Okay. Questions?
I suppose I would question goal two, I'm not sure that I, I see it phrased in many different ways throughout the document, both this document and the finance document. Under Public Works is, excuse me, I agree with that. Public Works Construction, I agree with that. And I, I now agree, I see that Parks Maintenance Facility was developed with strategy, and I agree with that. I'm sorry, I'm just ready.
Okay. Moving on, budget message, Mr. Conkle?
I think we did review.
Oh, I'm sorry, there we go. So has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of April 13th, 2015? If so, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Approve the minutes of April 13th, 2015.
Second.
My Commissioner Shaw, second my Commissioner I, all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. Now, budget message. Okay, fine.
Yeah, so what?
All right. Well, once again, welcome, and, and thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. Accomplishing this process is mandated by Oregon law, but it's also important to have community members who sit on this Budget Committee to help us, ask us the questions, challenge us on some of our assumptions, and in the end, hopefully support the budget that we brought forward for you here tonight. So once again, thank you very much for the time that it takes to read these documents, prepare for this meeting, and be here tonight, and any other nights that it takes to get this completed. So I really do appreciate that on behalf of myself, the directors, and the commission. This is the, it's my pleasure to present the 2017 proposed biennial budget for the city of Oregon City. This is the city's third budget, biennial budget, and I think that it's shown, it's become more and more successful every year that we've done it. It does a couple of things for staff. It allows us to focus and invest on long-term projects that usually take more than a year to complete. It helps us with our strategic planning, whether that be for infrastructure, land use documents, or other investments that we're making. This also has been, and shown over the last couple of years, it's saved considerable amount of staff time and energy in preparing this budget. Quite a bit goes into this, months and months of work in prepping, going through the goal-setting process, then writing the budget, and then getting to the point that we're at right here. Going to the two-year cycle is certainly self-saves staff time and resources in preparing this budget. The third thing is, and we talked a little bit earlier, is that it aligns better with the election of our commissioners, as well as that goal-setting process, so that we're able to move forward with, with new commissioners when they come on in January. We're hoping that tonight, you'll see that the proposed biennial budget meets the goals and priorities that have been set out by the commission. They help the staff to maintain the day-to-day operations and the level of service that we're providing for all the other things that we do, whether that be officers on the street, manning the front counters, the recreational facilities and programs that we provide, so there are a lot of this day-to-day operational issues that we provide on a continuous basis, whether a goal of the commission or not. This will also allow, and the funding that we've brought forward is to focus on and implement some very necessary infrastructure investments, in water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, and critical facilities and buildings throughout the community. Through this document, we're also proposing to accomplish this without raising taxes or any additional new user fees, other than increases due to inflation for some of our, our user fees that we have in our utilities. We're not proposing a tax increase at this time. And then, while balancing all of this, really trying to maintain the fiscal health for the city, making sure that the decisions we make are setting us up for two years from now, four years from now, and beyond. We know that we'll have challenges, public employees retirement system is one that's been in the news quite a bit lately, and those increases that are associated with that. Under current legislation, we fully expect to see increases to the PERS rate that we, that we pay two more times in the next, over the next four years. So really making sure and working with Wyatt's Group and the finance to make sure that we, we understand what those trajectory, what those impacts are, and trying to set ourselves up so that we can continue to meet our obligations for long-term legacy pension requirements, but also continue to provide a high level of service that the commission and the community demands and expects from, from its city. As per required by Oregon budget law, it requires that I present the budget message to you, and I'm doing so in accordance, in that the budget was prepared and balanced in accordance with Oregon budget law. I would like to take a moment, and Wyatt did a little bit of this, but to thank the staff that really did help put this together, months and months of effort went into this, and that includes multiple staff members, many of them who are not here yet, here tonight. There are staff leads who work in Public Works on specific projects, tracking their costs, their time, what they expect to be able to accomplish over the next two years, gets rolled up into a larger budget for that fund, and then for that department. And I really do want to thank the department directors, they've really stepped forward in preparing budgets that are thoughtful and accomplish what we need them to do, but in a fiscally responsible manner. But also for their leadership of their departments, and their candor in how we make decisions in the city, and the expertise that they bring to the community. It's really a benefit for me, as well as the citizens, as we, as we run this great city that we're all part of. I'd also like to thank Wyatt Parno, I think his, his work is really starting to show pay dividends as we've consolidated to the two-year budget cycle, consolidation of funds. The budget process, as complicated as it is, is getting easier and easier every year. We're also starting to see the benefits of long-term financial planning, the reduction of funds, how we account for how we spend funds and how the revenues come in. It's getting easier and easier to understand, as well as to manage, so I really do appreciate that. And Maria McElveen, Assistant Finance Director, has done an amazing job behind the scenes, preparing the documents that you see here before you tonight, the PowerPoint, just an amazing amount of effort and work, and very well done, as well as Ryan Bradyhoff and Aaron Wilkie, some of the magic behind the numbers. So it really is a group effort on the finance department, and hopefully we'll see that tonight as we move through the budget.
So, go ahead. I'm sorry?
I don't know if there are any questions now, or we could, could we think, when will it be a time of questions?
We can do them at the end, but... I'm okay with questions in the process.
You understand?
Yeah.
I have a couple, I have a couple.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Gifford, use your microphone, please.
Thank you. I have heard for a few years now that we are saving buckets of money, figuratively speaking, by going to the biennium, and it, it makes sense that we are, I have never heard that quantified. I've never heard how many hours, how many dollars we are saving by, by the biennium process. I'd like to see a number or two that would explain, just so that we can brag about it, just so that we can tell our citizens, hey, you know, by having gone to this biennium process, we have saved X amount of money for you. And I think it'd be a reasonable question for someone to ask, and I'd sure like to have an answer for it. Okay, I think we can look into that, thank you very much, Budget Committee member Gifford. And if I recall, maybe the first year, we did come up with an hours estimate. I have an expert management analyst in the audience, Ryan, that might be able to put some information together. Yeah, that would be nice to quantify that, because I can assure you that all four of these folks were here every weekend for the past two months, so that would be good for us to be able to brag about the savings. It's really, I think the city manager said it really well, that the focus that he had and that we have is that when the department heads aren't spending weeks analyzing each thing at one point in a given year, they're out there focused on projects in the community, and that's kind of a big benefit. So we'll try to quantify that for you. Yeah, it would be nice to have, just a ballpark, anyway. Second question that I had was, you had mentioned, Mr. Manager, that, that the PERS rates are going to be going up a couple of times? I didn't know the rates were going up, I thought that, that the rates themselves are going up. I thought it was like eight percent every year, or something like that.
No, that's the, that's the, that's the assumed, the assumed return on the PERS investments. But the rates that the employers will be paying are going to go up every biennium for the next several.
Three to four percent, starting July 1, 2017, two years thereafter, and two years thereafter is what's being talked about. Okay, that's more clear. And then the last question that I have for you is regarding the cycle of the budget preparation. It, it always seems to me, or it has for, for as long as I've been involved in the budget, that it always seems to be a crunch time at the very end, and I understand that now that we're doing a biennium, this is much more in alignment with the, the election of, of commission and so on. I'm just wondering, is there any possibility of getting things started a little earlier? I know that we don't have the swearing-in ceremonies until the first, the second, no, the first Tuesday in January, but it seems to me as though some meetings could be held before that, that could, that could bring new commissioners on staff, and I know that you haven't established the goals yet or not, but it seems as though be, some groundwork could be done a little earlier, so we're not in such a crunch at the end of this, because it always, it breaks my heart to see these people pulling their, pulling their teeth out, trying to get this thing done in time. And I just wondered if there's any way that we could adjust that process, or at least look at it. Thank you again, Budget Committee Gifford, I appreciate that comment, and we definitely thought about that, Tony and I had conversations about that, and the mayor as well, and as I think you're aware, probably more than most, having been involved in the city process for a long time, there's definitely a flow of a course of things taking place, and one is the election of the, of the new commissioners. At that point, it's welcome aboard, and they get sworn in in January, and there's a big process, some of the new commissioners might affirm this, that, just kind of getting to know each of the departments and what's happening, and the city manager, and then really, the city manager and the city recorder's office setting up the entire retreat takes quite a bit of work. So we are as a, as a staff and as with commissioners, meeting even before the retreat, and talking about, Tony meets with each of the commissioners, and, you know, what are your interests? So to kind of walk off after an election and say, what would you like to accomplish? Might not be fair. So what we, you know, the soonest we can get to that is in late January, and then it really is, you know, we did a little bit of extension this cycle, but it really is just pedal-to-the-metal grind after that. The commission sets the direction, the city manager says, this is how I want to do it, and this is what I expect from the departments, we have time set aside for each of them, and then we have things like landslides during the floods, which happened this year for Public Works. So, you know, he's got the biggest, John Lewis has the biggest budget, but he was out there fixing sewer lines and things like that that had broken, but really, and then finance comes in, so I can, I, I believe that that process, from the election to the budget hearing, is all dialed in and as tight as we can make it. So I don't think there's probably a way to wiggle out of that, but what we do do is after the budget hearing, we get together as a finance team, and Tony has us meet as an executive team, and we discuss what went well, what could we do better, so we do, we do quite a process afterwards to try to make things better. At the conclusion of this, I'll even send an email to all of you, asking if you have any recommendations for improvement. So I hope that helps. Yep, thank you. Thank you.
So before we move on, I do want to make mention of the fact that this is the, Mr. Manager's very first budget as a, as a city manager, so I want to say thanks for all the work that you've done to get us here.
Thank you, team effort. So, any other questions before we get started?
Well, William said that was his last question, so we should be...
So far.
We should be good to go? So tonight, I'll be presenting the budget message, starting with the introduction, then the overall budget, which is all the funds, then we'll start to work through the individual funds, providing background on the general fund, library, the community development department, which is made up of building and planning with their separate funds, and then Public Works, and their four separate infrastructure funds, working through then the other miscellaneous funds that are out there that don't fit squarely into one of those other ones, then the capital projects, then the conclusion, more, more opportunity for questions, and then move on with the rest of the agenda. Any questions about how we'll kind of work through this tonight? Okay, great, thank you. The proposed budget is balanced, meaning resources equal requirements, and we are operating within our means. The city's executive team prepared the budget with a focus on achieving the city commission's goals and priorities from the January retreat. Highlights of the proposed budget include ongoing funding for economic development opportunities. These include the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, infrastructure for the industrial and employment lands along Beaver Creek Road, further development of the city's tourism plan, and general economic development planning for the city as a whole. The budget also includes investment in public facilities that are insufficient to serve the city's existing and increasing population, some of which are in serious disrepair. You will also see investments in affordable housing, and what we can do to address some of the perceived and existing barriers for affordable housing construction in the community, homelessness, as well as plans to open up the Ermittinger House for tourism, increase communication with, with the community, and a citywide permitting system. Next, we'll focus on goal one, the cultivate an environment for successful economic development, and one of the main projects that we've been working on for many years is the Willamette Falls Legacy Project along the river. The state of Oregon has allocated twelve and a half million dollars for the River Walk project, and this metro is put in five million dollars. We currently have a goal of twenty-five million dollars for Phase One, which include extensive demolition, and then can be first phase of construction of the River Walk. We are also moving forward with continuing to staff, providing Oregon City staff for that project in coordination with Metro, Clackamas County, the state of Oregon, and the property owner. And we've provided funding, including three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, and seven hundred thousand dollars from Public Works and system development charges for transportation and parks infrastructure as part of the project. This will not only be a public access project, but it will have an opportunity to improve the habitat along the shoreline with the Willamette River, as well as the economic development investment that can occur not only on the property, but throughout downtown, up on top of the, of the bluff, and we would argue over into Westland as well. The second one that we're focusing on, and you'll see investment in, is the Beaver Creek Employment Area. We started a partnership with Clackamas Community College, the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and Clackamas County, in starting the Beaver Creek Employment Area Marketing Initiative called Putting Education to Work. The proposed budget includes funding to complete construction of a sanitary sewer line from Berry Hill Shopping Center roughly southbound to what you see as development site number two on Beaver Creek Road. It'll serve those development sites and the surrounding area. In the prior biennium, the Economic Development Department secured a design grant for the sewer project. The design effort is nearing completion, and the preliminary cost estimate of the sewer line project is 1.1 million. Wastewater system development charges will be used to pay for ninety percent of that project with the remaining cost paid by the general fund. You may ask, why is it putting education to work? Both the high school and Clackamas Community College offer advanced degrees in manufacturing type of services, so really trying to show that we have a labor force-ready workforce from those educational facilities, and using that as a marketing tool to draw investment into those vacant industrial and employment lands, some of the only in the city, to bring in those type of manufacturing, living wage jobs that I think we all like to see in Oregon City. As many of you are aware, there's a, there's a continuing imbalance between housing and job opportunities, not only in Oregon City, but throughout Clackamas County. So all those efforts that we can make to really try to drive economic investment and, and growth in our employment areas to provide those living wage jobs are what we're trying to accomplish in this area. One of the other areas that we're looking at in the proposed budget is dedicating transient lodging taxes to complete the Oregon City Tourism Plan. Objectives of the plan include development of a stakeholder group, refinement of the existing tourism strategy, coordination between the numerous heritage assets that exist in the city, and development of a national promotional campaign. The transient lodging taxes have also been set aside as a startup to support funding and to support the operation of the recently restored Ermittinger House. One of the other projects that we're studying are all the railroad crossings of the U.P. Main Line through downtown. We have about thirty-two commuter and freight lines that use the U.P. line. One of the goals of the commission is to not only get more businesses downtown, but also residential. And so one of the options would be to install a, what we call a quiet zone on the U.P. Main Line through downtown. So we've identified funding available to begin that study in the design work in coordination with Oregon Department of Transportation rail line, as well as Union Pacific, to get the study completed, and then we would work on funding to implement those quiet zone changes.
Is that something physical that needs to be done?
Yes, it is. But first, we need to come up with the, the plan of what the improvements would be. But first, we need to come up with the, the plan of what the improvements would be at each of the pedestrian and vehicular crossings through downtown. Once we have agreement from what the plan is, then it's to go in and do the construction of it. The next goal is addressing critical facility needs. As many of you have probably seen, one of the most visible projects that we've completed recently was the library renovation. A ten and a half million dollar project came in on time and under budget. Since the library expansion grand opening last October, average visits to the library have doubled from fifteen thousand per month before the renovation to over thirty thousand per month. And in March, we had thirty-seven thousand folks visit the library and use it. The expanded building allows enhanced services to be provided to the community, including popular programs such as Legalad, Teen Make It, First Friday Films, and the annual May the Fourth Be With You event. I think one of the most amazing things about this was the Carnegie, original Carnegie Library is on the National Register of Historic Places, and I congratulate Mo and her team in working with the citizens and the neighborhood association, in coming up with a very thoughtful design that not only meets the needs of the community as it continues to grow, but also really celebrates that national historic building on the front of it. The investment that we've made in this facility will ensure that for decades, our community has a great place to come, to utilize the resources available there. Would also to want to talk about how this can be, how this is an economic driver. In March, as I said, we had over thirty-seven thousand people using the library. That's a huge investment, economic driver for Malala, Seventh Street, Washington Street, and our downtown, of bringing folks into our community and visiting our businesses as they use the library. One of the other critical facilities that we've identified is the Police Municipal Court Facility. State law requires that essential facilities such as police and court comply with seismic standards by the year 2022. The existing court facility and police station was built in the nineteen sixties and fails to meet these standards and is woefully inadequate for the services that they provide. There are inadequate showers, evidence rooms, the ability to bring victims in without being in view of all the public that are in there on a court day. The facility just isn't appropriate for the uses that are currently going on there. As you are aware, the city was unsuccessful in passing a measure last November that allowed issuance of bonds to fund a new facility as required by our charter. At the city commission retreat, direction was given to staff to proceed with an election in September of this year for the bonding authority. The bond structure has been changed to simplify the ballot measure. The prior language required by the state for general obligation bonds was contradictory to the funding source the city would be using. Police Department staff will continue to work with neighborhood associations in the community to inform residents on why the community's safety advancement fee, which was, was implemented, and why the building is needed. The fee is a flat charge of six dollars and fifty cents per month, and will end when the bond is paid off for the facility. The utility fee is a more equitable debt repayment option than the use of property tax levy, because it allocates the cost to all of the users of the, of the police force. So with the flat fee of six dollars and fifty cents, we're able to collect from residents, businesses, nonprofits, government entities, whereas if we went with a property tax levy, it would have been more expensive at ten dollars per month, and it would have only been collected by those folks paying property taxes, even though every business, every community, every lot potentially in this, in this city uses police services. So we do believe it is a more equitable way to collect for those uses, and that it will go away once the bond is paid off. Another critical facility that we've identified is the Public Works Operations Center on Center Street. Now, the current budget includes annual transfers from the Public Works Fund to continue saving for the operations center remodel. Over the past two years, Public Works has engaged with community stakeholders to explain plans to reduce the footprint of the facility. We anticipate that thirteen point four million will be saved for this project by the end of the biennium. So I really would like to thank Martin and John Lewis and their team, really engaging with the property owners around them and the neighborhood association to redesign the Public Works Center. They've moved the heavier trucks down along Center Street, trying to reduce some of the noise and vehicular impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, and they've moved the office up on top of the bluff, once again, to try to lower those impacts on the, on the surrounding neighbors. So we hope to continue to move forward with that project, and we currently have it funded to begin construction during the biennium. Another facility to address critical facility needs, this includes two, the parks deferred maintenance situation that we have in our parks, as well as the parks operation facility for staff out at the cemetery. The proposed budget includes continued funding of the parks maintenance position that was added in the current biennium, and three hundred thousand dollars allocated towards deferred capital maintenance. Projects include Chapin Park restrooms, and paving and draining improvements through several parks, including Hillendale, John Storm, Park Place, Singer Creek, as well as trail and pathway improvements in Clackamette, Hillendale, Atkinson, and Singer. The proposed funding is not sufficient, nor is it a long-term solution for the amount of deferred maintenance the city currently faces. City commission goals include efforts to identify long-term revenue source options to meet the growing parks' maintenance needs over the next two years. Parks' operation and maintenance staff are currently housed on the cemetery site in a temporary construction trailer, with equipment stored in various locations throughout the city. The crew has been working in the trailer for four years, since the former facility was condemned due to unsafe conditions. The proposed budget includes six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction of a modest facility to house the staff. Now, we'll move into the overall budget. The budget is balanced at one hundred and ninety point nine million with a tax rate of four point four zero nine dollars per thousand of assessed value, the same rate as the previous biennium. So we begin with the total budget of one hundred and ninety point nine million. We have a beginning fund balance of sixty-three point four million. We expect revenues of one hundred and twenty-seven point five million, and expenditures of one hundred and fifty-six point three million, leaving a contingency and reserves of thirty-four point six million. The tax rate that I described, four point four zero nine dollars per thousand, remains well below the maximum allowed rate of five dollars and point zero five seven one per thousand. The lowest rate saves the average homeowner about one hundred and sixty dollars annually, based on an assessed value of a home at two hundred and fifty dollars.
About twenty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yes. Yes.
What was the tax rate last year, or last biennium?
Four, four point four zero, it's, we're proposing to keep it the same.
How long has it been?
Four years?
It was not last biennium, but the biennium before, we had a slight increase to fund three police officer positions.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five cents.
And what do we get, say, for every nickel or every cent?
Ten cents will provide about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So what this pie chart here shows are some of the changes from the two thousand fifteen through seventeen budget. The term total budget refers to all resources and requirements of the city, including carryover funds, internal transfers, and ending reserves. The operating budget includes only inflationary increases to fees. In addition, during budget preparation, department heads were asked to budget materials and service with no increases unless contractually obligated, and they were able to successfully complete that. The additional funding for capital projects is primarily from savings, grants, and system development charges. The chart here shows the total budget change of twenty-two point six million over the current budget. The largest increase, eleven point five million, consists of ending reserves. These reserves accumulate until such time as they can be spent on eligible projects. Good examples are system development charges or equipment replacement reserves. In other instances, restricted reserves are held to account for the cyclical nature of business, such as in the building fund. Pass-through expenses, one point six million, include fees collected on behalf of other agencies. For example, fees collected for Tri-City Treatment Plant increased by one point four million, and we're just the pass-through, and we bring the permit in, and then pay it out. Transfers and internal service charges totaled nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars are transactions between city businesses, and do not actually represent an increase to the operating budget. The capital outlay of four point three million has additional funding to address deficiencies in our utility infrastructure system and for the facilities we described earlier. The operating expense increase consists of personnel, four point four million, and materials and services at five hundred thousand. This includes cost of living increases of two percent in each year of the biennium, insurance benefits at an increase of five percent each year, and per increases of three and a half percent in the first year. Additionally, the police budget includes a new homeless liaison officer, a new school resource officer, as well as the, what was negotiated in their, in their three-year contract to bring the officers up to equivalent with the rest of the region at the midpoint in their pace, in their pay grades. The budget also includes a full cycle of funding for positions added to the current biennium, the community engagement quarter, economic development quarter, and additional engineering staff. The change in the beginning balance is the carryover of unspent budget, primarily capital reserves, which are budgeted assuming that the departments are all able to proceed with all projects. This is not always the case. For example, the Public Works Operations Center was budgeted in the amount of nine point nine million for this current biennium. However, as the project did not break ground, these monies are now carried over into the beginning at, beginning balance for two thousand seventeen through nineteen. Property taxes are budgeted at four percent and four and a half percent property value increases respectively for each year of the biennium. Some franchise fees and rights-of-way rates were updated in the prior biennium. This budget includes the full biennium of those rate increases. Intergovernmental revenues vary annually based on state allocation and government grants that were awarded. Charges for services include increases for inflation only for utilities, plus adjustments for growth and development. Licenses, permits, and fines show a slight increase in building permits due to anticipated development that we foresee.
Excuse me? The property taxes, you said, are projected at four and four and a half percent?
Mm-hmm.
That's for the city, right?
Correct.
The tax assessment for the county is five to five and a half. And I'm wondering why, why isn't Oregon City projected to grow as much as the county is?
Yeah, thank you for the...
I only say that because I'm on the, also on the Fire District Budget Committee, and I know that they are taking a middle road on that and budgeting at five point two five percent in property taxes.
Yeah, no, thank you, that's an excellent question, Budget Committee Member Gifford, and I have an excellent answer for that. We have four and four and a half percent. The county releases a letter that says they're looking at four and a half to five. We've done an analysis of the county's estimates for rates over the past five years, and found that it's fluctuated, so we don't follow exactly what the county says. In fact, I'll just leave it at that. And the county's assessment office is amazing, and we respect them very much. But we've actually analyzed the differences from what their projections are to what actually occurs, and we're comfortable with our numbers, also probably bud, possibly budgeting a little conservatively. We'd rather be on that end than having to make cuts later.
Okay, thank you.
This chart shows requirements in the overall budget. Obviously, there are fluctuations in capital outlay depending on which projects are programmed in which year. I'll provide more detail on requirements in the following slides. As mentioned, when discussing the total budget change, we are ending the proposed biennium with additional reserves, which is reflected in the last column. This, this pie chart shows where the money comes from all across funds. Charges for services are the primaries, primary source of revenue for the city, and fund the utilities, water, wastewater, pavement maintenance, and storm. Property taxes are the next largest revenue source, and primarily fund police and parks services. Other sources include franchise fees and rights-of-way charges, intergovernmental revenue, and fines and penalties. Where does the money go? This chart shows where that occurs. Oregon City is primarily a service delivery business, providing customer service to our citizens and those that, that develop in our community. So personal costs make up the largest percentage of the budget, just over thirty-two percent. The budget also allocates just over thirty-two percent of spending for capital facility projects and utility system improvements. This is something we've definitely been trying to work on, is making sure that we can invest in the needed upgrades that we have to our infrastructure, one of our biggest assets that we have here in the community. Material and services include contracts, operating materials, and utilities paid by the city, such as electric and gas. The city maintains a low debt service ratio. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends less than ten percent. So to give you some comparison, throughout the region, the city of Portland is at eleven percent, the cities of Wilsonville and Tigard are at eight percent, Westland's at five percent, and Oregon City is at three percent, which is really good news. Let's transition from the overall budget to the individual fund budget, starting with the general fund. The general fund is the principal operating fund for the city, used to account for police, community services, economic development, and general government services. The total budget is fifty-one point two million. The ending funding balance is budgeted at two point seven million, and that also includes three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in monies that are restricted for specific purposes, such as dedicate donations that we've received or grant funds. The general fund includes programs that are typically funded by property taxes and general revenues, rather than specific dedicated revenue sources. Police and parks are the primary service areas. The fund also includes economic development and departments that provide citywide support, such as finance, human resources, city manager's office. Property tax revenues are projected at twenty-five point four million for the biennium. As I stated earlier, this reflects a four and a four and a half percent assessed value increase of property taxes, with allowances for compression, discounts, and collection rate. The budget maintains a property tax rate at four point four zero nine dollars per thousand. The remaining major sources of revenue are rights-of-way and franchise fees at seven point one million, intergovernmental revenues of three point three million, charges for services including park and cemetery programs and parking revenues of three point one million, and the municipal court and other program fines and penalties of two point three million. Additional revenues totaling one point five million include licenses and permits, assessments, and other taxes such as the transient lodging tax, and interest income. Transfers in and internal service charges are for services provided to other departments, and for other departments' share of the cost of a new citywide financial system. The general fund expenditures are for policy and administration, police, community service, and general government. Policy and administration has a budget of eleven point two million, and includes the city commission, city manager, city recorder, finance, municipal court, human resources, economic development, and information technology departments. The budget increases by one point one million. A large portion of that change is from an accounting adjustment to properly record pass-through revenues for court fines collected and remitted to the county and the state. The rest of the change is primarily due to increases in restricted grant programs and economic development for the enhanced grant and tourism programs. The police department, with a total budget of twenty-one million, is the largest department in the general fund. Increases are mainly in personnel, including the two previously mentioned positions, the homeless liaison officer and the student resource officer, as well as agreements made in the three-year contract that we just finalized. The community services budget of nine million includes parks and cemetery maintenance, recreation and aquatics, and pioneer community center operations, as well as funding for deferred capital maintenance and a much-needed facility at the cemetery. The general government budget of four and a half million provides funding for overall community enhancements, such as the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, investments in heritage assets, and street lighting on city roads. It also pays for shared city services, such as facility maintenance, general liability insurance, and the purchase of a new financial and permitting system. The budget includes approximately two point one million in one-time investments and a one point nine million operating loss over the biennium. At the conclusion of the biennium, ending fund balance reserves are budgeted at two point seven million. These reserves are necessary to provide working capital for the beginning of the next budget cycle, and to provide protection against unexpected changes in financial conditions.
What's our collection rate?
Was it ninety-five percent?
Ninety-five?
Ninety-five percent.
And that's beyond our control, isn't it? That, that's, the county collects that, there's not too much that we can do to encourage people to pay their taxes.
That includes the discount, we, if you pay all of your taxes upfront, there's a little portion discount there, if you pay in November, and also uncollectibles, that eventually the county can recoup, foreclosures and such.
Thank you.
The library budget includes increased funding to run the expanded facility and enhance programming. More children and young adult programs with youth literacy and learning opportunities are being provided. The library fund is budgeted at six and a half million for the biennium. District property taxes are projected conservatively at four point three million and comprise sixty-five percent of the total resources. The remaining resources include beginning fund balance of one point nine million, and transfers in of three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. So you'll see slight changes on the transfer in, slight reduction of a hundred thousand dollars there. On the library requirements, personnel and material costs include the increases to meet the needs of the expanded facility, staffing, utilities, maintenance, and so on. The budget for staffing and materials purchases is three point six million. Principal and... Principal and interest payments on the new library bonds are $800,000, leaving $2.1 million in ending fund balance. The community development fund houses the planning division, which is responsible for current and long-range planning projects. In the proposed budget, the Geographical Information Services, GIS, was removed from community development and placed in the general fund, along with information technology. Here are the primary revenues for the community development. Intergovernmental revenue is budgeted at $400,000 in anticipation of grants for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan zoning, and affordable housing analysis. Charges for services are projected at $700,000 from customers, primarily for review of land use applications. Pass-through revenues and expenditures total $1.2 million. The city collects the school's excise tax on behalf of the Oregon City School Districts and remits those funds to the district for construction of school facilities. Transfers in from the general fund are $500,000 to support the planning division's move to a new location at Mount Pleasant and to support operations. The relocation will provide cost savings because the division expected to move to an existing city facility away from an expensive lease contract that we're currently in. Internal service charges include $600,000 for long-range planning services provided to other departments. Overall, the department expenditures are consistent with the prior period. A reduction is reflected in personnel due to the reclassification of GIS to the general fund, and the increase in capital outlay is due to the department's relocation. The building fund includes inspection services to ensure that construction in the city is safe and structurally sound. The total budget of $6.2 million is an increase of $3.3 million from the prior biennium, due to significant development occurring in the city and seeing the results of bringing all inspection services in-house and not contracting out with Clackamas County anymore. Revenue in the fund is restricted for building activities. As mentioned before, it is common to maintain a strong reserve to support the cyclical nature of building activity that we typically see as things either pick up or slow down.
Excuse me? Speaking of picking up, assuming that something actually happens down at, at the Old Mill Site, that we're investing in pretty heavily for infrastructure, the size of those buildings, the mass of those buildings is going to be larger than most things that we have seen in this city. Are we going to have the staff, the, the building inspector's staff, capable of meeting those requirements? Or do you think we're going to have to staff up or contract after that?
It depends on what, what else is going on in the community at the time. The revenues probably generated from that could certainly justify a short-term staff position if we needed it to focus solely on Willamette Falls development.
It's assuming something will ever be built there, yeah.
Yep. As we just discussed, license and permits revenues are $3.5 million for development, from development activity, and the budgeted fund balance is increased. You'll also see pass-through revenues of $400,000, and those are for the state surcharge for building permits and metro payments that also get passed through. The chart shows the budget of building operations is consistent with the prior period, with an increase in capital outlay for the community development department relocation. The transfers out also include the division's contribution for a new permitting system to replace the very old system that we're currently working on in planning, building, and finance and other departments in the city.
Can we?
Yes, sir.
I was, I'd ask Mr. Parno to explain contingencies. He did a good job of it at Southport the other night, and then it might be good to explain it for us here, because you've got a $6 million budget here, and 2 million of it is contingencies.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Shaw, Budget Committee Member Shaw. I appreciate the opportunity to do that. So, we're aware in the city that contingency, a lot of times refers to specific set aside should there be unanticipated cost needs, and so that might be considered a smaller number, a lot of private companies, and in, in government typically as well. We moved fund balance primarily in each fund into a contingency line item, and that was for efficiency purposes administratively, because under local budget law in Oregon, to be able to access fund balance is more difficult than contingency. There are restrictions on our ability to use contingency in that staff cannot access those funds without a resolution of approval from the city commission. So, the funds are very safe being there. However, it's just administratively a lot more effective to budget them in contingency. And we, along those lines, we found that we had about three different line items that added up to be, what is the ending fund balance, and that got to be a little bit difficult to understand. So, the goal is to ultimately say that contingency number slash ending fund balance is what is an unrestricted amount of cash that can be used for the purpose designated. How much money do I have in my building fund? There's the one number that's not restricted.
So, can that money, since it's in the building, can it only be used for building?
I love that question, yeah. So, it can only be used for building, and, and thank you, Commissioner Idd, or Budget Committee Member Idd. That's common within municipal governments, that we have restrictions, a lot of times in state law, sometimes in contractual agreements. If you agree with all of your rate payers that they're going to pay a water bill, you should use that for water infrastructure, not to fund police officers, that kind of thing. Property taxes and rights-of-way usage charges are examples of revenue sources that can be used as the commission determines. The building fund revenues are restricted under state law, and typically, we set up funds to show the revenues that are restricted for those purposes.
Commissioner O'Donnell with a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parno. On a more macro scale, the budget overall, one notes that reserves and contingencies both show extreme growth. And my question for that is perhaps at some point in tonight's proceedings, you could reconcile that with a statement that's the intent of the city, to use all surplus is generated to accomplish three goals: meet reserve policies, avoid future debt, and reduce outstanding debt.
That's perfect. I'd love to address that now, Commissioner O'Donnell, if I could. So, there is, it's a multiple-point answer, but I think I can do it concisely. In order to, there are a couple of benefits. There are benefits of having ending fund balance reserves that are a little bit higher, but let me talk about those in a minute. As city manager mentioned, we've got an increase in some of the contingency or ending fund balance reserves, basically directly related to projects. And when you look at the city as a whole, you've got all of the utilities in there. So, capital project savings, an example would be in the water fund, we save up money to be able to do a major infrastructure replacement of water pipes, and so in a cycle, we might have a significant amount of reserves saved up. Another example is, as Tony mentioned, in the building fund, we've had a pretty good economic activity happening in the city, and for building, it makes a lot of sense to maintain reserves so that if economic activity falls off, we've got some cushion to be able to provide for services. So, and as you mentioned, it makes a lot of sense to have reserves for a rainy day fund, in case things should go wrong. The city manager was very clear with me and with his department head, saying, because we know, for example, in the general fund, some of the things that are on the horizon, as he mentioned, PERS, we want to make sure that we're safe, so that we don't have to make emergency decisions, we have a little bit of cushion. Now, the second part of your question, related to debt service and how that can benefit the city, is we know that if we are to issue bonds, rating agencies look very favorably upon higher reserves. So, there's a couple of things that, when we have our double-A bond rating, which we're very proud of, there are a couple of ways to secure that, and I'm almost done. One is to be a wealthy city with very high property values, but we're a very working-class city that I love, and we don't have that situation where we've got super-high values of property, but what we are able to do is set aside some reserves that show that we're managing our resources fiscally responsibly. So, if we were to go out for bonds at this point, we'll probably be rated higher because of that.
Which will save us money.
Which will save us money on interest rates. Thank you.
Commissioner? Understood. One of the things that's frequently been expressed is of anticipation and future failures in our water delivery system, our pipe system. We have no reserves currently set up for that, nor, I don't, I didn't identify any of this budget.
Thank you.
Are we intended to address that by the contingency fund, if we were to experience a failure?
Yeah, I appreciate that question as well. So, there are no significant reserves set aside for water funding, and if we look out at the projections, we, we've had analysis through the Water Master Plan, and we do rate analyses that look out 20 years, and so we know all of the projects as they're needed, and then the master plan that identifies a certain amount of infrastructure replacement that should be completed every year, and each year, we've been falling behind. And your question is a very wise one, which is, do we have, is our reserve sufficient to cover some of those projects? It is not. We were able to, when we paid off water debt in the prior biennium, we were able to free up some dollars from rate covenants that were, that the Public Works Director now is using to complete some projects, and he's pretty savvy with saying, okay, well, we're going to go through a budget cycle and spend on the light side, knowing that we've got a big project coming up and we want to accomplish that. But to kind of bottom-line the answer, definitely in deferred maintenance in the water fund, each cycle, we're not able to replace the pipes, very old pipes, because we're the oldest city in the region, right? We're not able to replace them at the rate we should. So, that's a discussion that Tony and the city commission would like to have at a later time, how to address that.
I've got a procedural question for tonight. We're seeing things at the macro level, the overview. Will we examine them by department later, or when is the proper time to ask specific questions?
We can, how about we get through this, and then we can come back and go department by department, consistent with how the binder's laid up?
Okay, so, one clarification. So, the money we've been saving for the Public Works Facility Operations Center, where is that? Is that sitting in a contingency somewhere?
Yeah, that is. There's a community facilities fund. Would you like me to point out the page or come back to that?
No, just come back to it.
Okay. There's a community facilities fund.
Only one speaker at a time, please. Thank you.
I apologize. So, there's a community facilities fund where we, in the vein of being very transparent, for each of the major community projects that we do, like the Public Works Operations Center or the library, we set aside those funds for a future capital replacement, and there are monies accumulating, thank you for pointing that out as well, Mayor, there are monies accumulating for the future construction of the Public Works Operations Center, which is another reason why, until we complete that project, each year, Public Works has been setting aside a little money, so the reserves have been building. Once that project is completed, those reserves will be gone. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Okay, thank you.
The Transportation Division is responsible for the construction and maintenance of roadways, pathways, sidewalks, traffic signals, and guardrails. Street operations and pavement maintenance are accounted for separately within the Transportation Fund. The budget includes an increase of approximately $420,000 for a total of $11.2 million. Public Works recently received a $3.8 million appropriation for funds in the Malala Avenue Streetscape project between Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213. The city will provide a local match of $4 million using transportation funds and system development charges. The project includes reconstruction of pavement, the addition of crosswalks, completion of missing sidewalks, bike lanes, as well as amenities such as pedestrian-level lighting, benches, and street trees. The Transportation Fund is financed by state gasoline taxes, which are anticipated at $3.9 million for the biennium and are required to be spent on transportation system improvements, safety enhancements, and roadway maintenance. Transportation also collects revenue estimated at $4.7 million from the pavement maintenance utility fees. The revenue is restricted for use in accordance with the city's annual pavement maintenance plan. Expenses in the fund include $4 million for general transportation maintenance, $3 million for citywide roadway reconstruction projects, and $1.5 million for the Malala Avenue project. Transfers are for the Public Works Operations Center building, which we hope to get to $13.4 million by the end of the biennium, and fleet replacement. You'll see a slight reduce in fleet reserves. We've determined that they are adequate, and reduce that transfer from $280,000 to $60,000 in the biennium. Other large capital projects include signalization at 12th and Washington and safety measures along Highway 99E within this next biennium.
Hold on. So, I just want to be clear, Wyatt, so that everybody in the audience is clear. We cannot use general fund tax dollars or property tax dollars on transportation. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor, for that question. There isn't a restriction on the use of property tax dollars. However, property tax dollars aren't sufficient to cover police and parks operations, so there would have to be an adjustment. Their property taxes is one of the funding sources that could be used for other functions, but typically, as you know, what you see in Oregon is that they're just insufficient to cover your basic public safety and public amenity expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city manager, I have a question regarding transportation projects.
Fire away.
I've stood on the Alternative Mobility Study Task Force, and a couple of recommendations have come out of that work. Are there any funds set aside in this year, this biennium's budget to address some of those needs?
Commissioner Engelberg, do you have, could you elaborate a little bit on some of those projects? I think it's still a work in process.
Well, I think one of the ones that, one of the projects that had a lot of impact was a longer, I guess it would be an on-ramp from Beaver Creek heading from the east to the north on Highway 213, adjacent to the former school bus facility. Just seemed to have a lot of impact in reducing the volume to capacity ratio.
Right. So, I don't, I don't believe that we have those projects in, as they haven't been determined yet. So, I think as we move through the adoption of the alternative mobility standards, one of the parts of that will be to identifying revenues to implement some of those needed improvements, whether that be city-sponsored or exacted through land use applications. Does that cover it?
Would we be able to use some of the contingency in transportation to help with those costs?
I think the best, thank you, Commissioner Idd. I think the best way to answer that question is that the contingency amount, transportation's in a similar situation with water. So, we have some funds doing better than others. Transportation is definitely one of those funds that we've got a tiny bit of contingency, and the project list by far exceeds that amount. So, it's, it's probably a matter of prioritizing.
Well, and I would be hesitant to, to buy down the contingency fund, given where we are and what happens in the wintertime here. You know, we could have a major slide, take out a piece of rugway, there could be all kinds of other things that could happen that we would need, you know? That's not a whole bunch of money, as far as contingency is concerned.
Yeah, I guess as, just because we've got some new committee members here, and Tony and I have talked about this a lot, one of the ways to look at the Transportation Fund is, I think you're into this right now, but you've got two functions in there, the gas tax dollars. If we have, that covers a lot of the safety needs and lighting and all the very expensive stuff. I think we were at an STC get-together that John put together last week, and the fellow said, how much does it cost to do one of those streetlights? And I threw, I thought $100,000, somebody threw out $100,000, he said $500,000. So, that's not a government cost, that's a contractor cost, but we're finding just having gas taxes to be able to meet those safety needs, we're having problems doing that. The other component that's unique, and Tony talked about this, unique in Oregon City is the pavement maintenance utility charge, and that allows us to pave streets a lot better than other folks in our region. Where we're running into problems is street expansions, things like that, larger new construction, where we would use STCs to leverage hopefully some grant dollars, and Tony will talk about that.
Does that get to your, get to your question?
Yeah, I know there's not much in it, but I-
It's a great question.
Well, while we're interrupted, regarding the revenue coming in, I didn't hear a mention about the, excuse me for mentioning the Fire District again, but they have one last payment on Station 17. Is that correct? And I didn't notice where that was called out in our revenue, because we're not going to be able to depend on that for much longer.
That is correct. The budget includes, it used to have in debt service, and I can find the amount if you'd like me to, but within the budget includes in the new, their last payment is this year, 2017, and so the new budget is reduced by those payments in. We've been able to absorb that.
The Water Division distributes the city's potable water supply and protects public health by closely monitoring water quality and compliance with safe drinking water standards. Water is treated at Sal- Water is treated at South Fork Water Board Plant and operational jointly owned by the Cities of Oregon City and West Lynn. Oregon City's system conveys water across nearly a hundred and seventy miles of water mains. The Water Fund is budgeted at nineteen point four million for the biennium. The city's charter includes restrictions on water rates that prevents the utility from fully addressing aging infrastructure. However, funds are saved in cycles, and when sufficient funds are available, they are allocated to address the most immediate needs or in combination with other infrastructure projects. The city plans to spend down about two point three million of these reserves for pipe replacement projects. Water utility charges are budgeted at thirteen point nine million. Only inflationary increases of three percent are included for each year. Additional revenue has been recognized based on growth in the customer base as development continues to increase. Pass-through charges are SDC revenues collected on behalf of the South Fork Water Board. In the Water Fund, materials and services are the largest expense category. Overall, expenses remain relatively stable. However, approximately one point four million in transfers have been reclassified to materials and services as part of the Charts of Accounts restructuring. This category also includes three point three million in purchases of South Fork, from South Fork Water Board. The largest increase over the prior biennium is in capital outlay at two and a half million. The capital outlay budget includes pipe replacement projects of more than three million dollars in the south end in Lawton, Clermont, and Rivercrest areas. Additional replacement projects are included in Malala Avenue, Main Street between Tenth and Fifteenth, Center Street between Eighth and Ninth. And additional facility projects include setting aside funds for a needed reservoir in the Beaver Creek Road area, fall protection measures at existing reservoirs, pipe capacity upgrades, and water line replacement projects associated with the annual pavement maintenance program. We've managed to save for a few major pipe replacement projects in the new biennium. However, as mentioned earlier, there is still a growing deferred maintenance problem in the water system. The City Commission goals include an effort to begin community outreach regarding long-term water rates to address segregated infrastructure.
Why are those numbers different than the ones in the other?
Yeah, that's what I just noticed, too.
On the pie chart, I noticed it's the same pie, but they just seem to be...
The difference is contingency isn't on the paper, but it's on the screen.
Yeah, sometimes we have a pie chart that would look specifically at operating expenses, which is personnel, materials, and services capital outlay. Other times, we look at requirements, sorry, it's a technical state law term, which is those things plus ending balances, contingency, and so forth. So the percentages are probably slightly different for that reason.
So this is titled, "的要求 by catalog," or "category," and on page one hundred it says, "要求 by category," but they're just different percentages because you don't have the contingencies in there?
Let me double check on that, and I'll get it back to you in just a few minutes.
Okay.
The Wastewater Division is responsible for operating and maintenance of the city's sanitary sewer collection system. As many of you are aware, the city has an older system of pipes, and we are required to declare a building moratorium two years ago because the system was not adequate to support new construction. Increased funding was provided for staffing, contract services, and capital projects to address the problem. The Public Works Department has done an amazing job of addressing those moratorium areas and has completed six of the seven projects that are necessary, including in the Twelfth Street, Thirteenth Street, and Division, and Lynn Avenue areas of the city. The final project in the Hazelwood Drive area is identified for completion during the current biennium. Once the final moratorium problem is addressed, resources will be reallocated to the infiltration and inflow problem that is prevalent in our dated sewer system. Pipes in the system are cracked, which allows water to seep into and out of the pipes, resulting in higher treatment costs, loss of capacity, and health hazards. Utility fees are the main operating source of the Wastewater Fund, and consistent with the other utilities, we'll see only inflationary increases for the rates. The Wastewater Fund is projected to receive ten point nine million in utility revenue for the biennium. Additionally, five hundred thousand dollars in rights-of-way usage charges are collected from Tri-City and are allocated to support wastewater infiltration and inflow reduction programs. The Fund is budgeted to collect nine point seven million in pass-through charges that will be remitted to the Tri-City Sewer District. The Wastewater expenditure budget includes ongoing staffing and four hundred thousand dollars in contracts to further the city's efforts to reduce the infiltration and inflow of groundwater into the pipes. The capital outlay budget has funding of one point four million for sewer line repair and replacements and seven hundred thousand dollars for the Hazelwood Drive Moratorium Project. Additional projects include work in Kanema Neighborhood, as well as smaller projects to be included to align with the pavement maintenance program, and approximately eighty, eight thousand dollars in equipment. The outstanding sewer debt is from nineteen ninety-seven and matures in the year twenty twenty. Again, material and services has increased and transferred out decreased due to the accounts reclassification. What's that? Sure.
Thank you, City Manager. I have an answer for you. Budget Committee member differed.
Need to break the flow.
No, I think it's a good time, since Tony switched into the storm. So on page one hundred, you mentioned that that didn't match the slides. The answer was right, but we do have a typo there. So as you said, on page one hundred, that should read expenditures by category, and it reads requirements by category. So thank you for catching that. We'll make sure and make that update as we move forward with the budget. Thank you, Mayor.
The Stormwater Division is responsible for the operation and maintenance of the city's water runoff conveyance systems. It's responsible for flood control and pollution remediation and reduction. The Fund is budgeted at six and a half million dollars for the biennium. Public Works is nearing completion of updates to the city's stormwater master plan as required by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. The plan is designed to meet the new state permit requirements and is critical for the quality of streams, rivers, and our groundwater resources. Upon completion of the plan, a rate study and a system development charge analysis will be completed to determine the needs of the system and then brought to the Commission for their consideration. For the Stormwater Fund, charges for services are the main resource. The Stormwater Fund is budgeted to receive utility revenues of approximately five point three million. The budget includes, once again, only inflationary adjustments to the rates. Expenses are budgeted consistently with the prior biennium, leaving about five hundred thousand dollars in ending fund balance. Expenditures are for staffing and contracts to maintain twenty-two drainage basins, fifty-three detention ponds, and forty-four hundred catch basins throughout the city. The detention ponds will undergo scheduled maintenance multiple times each year, and the catch basins are cleaned out annually. Capital projects include seven hundred and sixty thousand for design and construction of pipe replacements at Scater Canyon, Harding Boulevard, Cathaway Court, and Van Buren Street, along with additional smaller system upgrades. Programs in these other funds support operations in other areas of the city. The operating budgets are consistent with prior periods. The Engineering Fund houses Public Works Management and Engineering Staff. Last year, the city hired an additional development engineer and two inspectors to support increased activity. The positions are paid for by development review fees and reduced contract costs. Staff in the Utility Customer Service Fund provide utility billing, collection, and general customer service. And staff in the Fleet Service Fund maintain the city's fleet, excluding the police vehicles. Public Works and participating departments evaluate the city's fleet to recommend newer replacement vehicles based on need, age, maintenance costs, and/or safety concerns. Departments make annual transfers into this fund to accumulate savings for current and future purchases. The proposed budget is six point seven million, includes one and a half million in purchases, primarily in Public Works and police, and leaves with a five point two million in ending fund balance.
So, quick question there. So do we buy our vehicles?
Yes, for the most part.
For the, generally. Excluding the police.
Versus leasing, generally true, yeah.
And is there a reason for that?
I probably, you know...
Martin, would you like to come and speak for that?
Martin says we lose money on a lease. If that's a sufficient question in terms of the analysis performed, or he could speak to it.
Martin Montalvo, Operations Manager, Oregon City Public Works. We typically buy the vehicles that we purchase. The contractual agreements that we comply with, with the state purchasing program, give us really good rates on a purchase for a vehicle versus trying to do a lease agreement. There is no statewide contract for leasing of municipal vehicles. Typically, we'll save anywhere between fifteen, twenty percent off sticker price for a vehicle that we acquire either through one of the state contracts, or there are three federal contracts that we're signatories to, and we use any one of those to get us the best deal that's available.
Okay, thank you.
I was just thinking that on a personal level, anytime I've looked at the cost of leasing my personal vehicle, it'd be expensive than, more expensive than buying, I was thinking too. But...
And the limitations.
It's a great question, though.
Next, we'll move on to the last two funds in the budget are the Community Facilities and System Development Funds. The Community Facility Fund includes the public building projects we've discussed earlier, the Public Works Operations Center, savings for the public safety building, and a small set aside for a future city hall. Each project's funding is restricted and segregated. The total budget for each project is shown here. As discussed previously, the city will request voter approval in September to issue bonds for the Police and Court Facility. If the measure passes, bond proceeds will be budgeted through a supplemental budget adjustment. The System Development Fund accounts for development revenues that are dedicated to projects of new development and increases to future capacity. Each of the utility system development charges are restricted and segregated. Transportation has funding set aside for Myers Road completion, as well as a match for Malala Avenue. Water has funding for a new water line in Myers Road and startup costs for reservoirs, pump stations, and force mains. Wastewater budget includes the completion of the last moratorium project along Hazelwood Drive, as well as improvements at Myers Road and the Beaver Creek Road sewer extension project. Stormwater STCs fund various small upgrades throughout the community. And Parks STCs are allocated to support the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, Riverwalk, and a purchased property. Additional funds have been earmarked for construction of a new community park, potentially Glen Oak or Philborun or Wesley Lynn Park Two. Just take a brief minute to walk through some of the things we've completed under the existing budget. We've talked quite a bit about the library expansion at the Carnegie Library, just an absolutely amazing project. Once again, would like to thank the Friends of the Library, who brought in over five hundred thousand dollars in donations for that project. So it's a pretty impressive amount for a community of our size. And as well, you know, a great job by Director Cole in managing that project and running that facility. So a great visible project that we've been able to complete. Significant upgrades were completed at the Aquatics Center, including ADA upgrades, a front office remodel, and pool painting, striping, and draining improvements. This is another one of our more heavily-used facilities with over a hundred and forty-one thousand visitors to the pool and its programs last year.
What is that picture in the lower left?
The whole drain.
Oh.
That's the before.
Okay.
The city's pavement maintenance program has been very successful. Over forty lane miles of city streets were repaired or resurfaced in the last cycle, including projects along Hilda, Singer Hill, Glen Oak Road, Warner Milne. Public rights-of-way in our streets are one of the biggest, largest assets and investments that we have in the community. This program has allowed us to prolong the life of our streets and protect them, avoiding additional higher costs of completely replacing these streets, as well as demonstrating our ability to provide good projects for the community with the funds they've been providing us, as well as coordinating these with other infrastructure projects that we're making at the time. As part of the annual paving program, the Pioneer Center parking lot received a much-needed resurfacing. Pioneer Center donations were used to pay for the project, which had significant cost savings as it was completed in conjunction with adjacent right-of-way work that was occurring. During the heavy storms in December of two thousand and fifteen, we had two significant events. A landslide out at the apartments, as well as a section of the Holcomb Boulevard failing. And the city was required to make the emergency repairs. The storm event that year was declared a federal disaster. And Public Works and Finance worked jointly to ensure FEMA funds for this project were available to recuperate the costs that we spent in responding to these emergencies. This slide shows one of the most visible water line repairs that we had in the city. It was a water leak during the winter along ninety-nine E. This is also one of the projects that you'll see for funding in the proposed budget to replace this ninety-foot, approximately ninety-foot water line going up the bluff adjacent to ninety-nine. Here's an example of one of the sanitary sewer projects that we were able to complete. The before on the left, the after on the right, obviously. Once again, just good investment in addressing some of the sanitary sewer issues that we have throughout the city. Here are some of the work that we completed of the six of the seven moratorium projects throughout the community. Some significant pipe damage occurred. But all in all, like I said, they got after it and got six of those sevens completed in the last two years, which is pretty impressive.
Speaking of the sewer moratorium project, are we ever going to get Lynn Avenue repaved?
Yes, we are.
You're up, Martin.
You should thank your boss for taking vacation.
I'll get him when he gets back. Martin Montalvo, Operations. So they were doing some of the milling and paving was actually being conducted over the last, today and tomorrow. That'll cover the majority of the major impact area. And then we'll be coming through with FEMA funds in the next two-year cycle, and we'll be completing the remainder of the road. And then we're also working on another project in conjunction with South End Road for some possible federal funding to redo all of Lynn Avenue and portions of High Street as a result of the detour.
Thank you.
Senator, we're also repaving Fifteenth Avenue, which was torn up for sewer work as well.
So Fifteenth Avenue, we're actually starting construction on that. And then just before the new fiscal year starts, we did the design this last, design season, which is the last two months. We let the contract out, you've already awarded it. And, or actually, you will be awarding it at your next commission meeting. And then the intent is to start construction on that just as soon as the funds become available, July first.
So it's Fifteenth from where to where?
Fifteenth from Main Street up through Holt.
Division, right?
Not all the way to the Division, no.
Oh, sorry, run out of it. Holt's only three blocks.
Yeah, just three blocks south. It'll get up above the rise and the rock retaining wall.
Well, and the hospital's gonna have to do some work on Fifteenth as well, right?
That's why we didn't go all the way up there.
Right, okay. Were you able to hear that, Commissioner?
Okay, thank you.
While we try to avoid them, we obviously have pump stations throughout the city for sanitary sewer, so the needed upgrade to make sure that those continue to operate, as well as upsizing as new development comes into the community in those pump station facilities. Here's an example of some of the smaller covert repair projects and erosion control projects that we've done with our stormwater, really trying to maintain capacity of those systems and be able to move that water down during larger rain events. Some of the upcoming projects that are proposed in the budget before you, we've talked quite a bit about the Parks Operation Facility. The building that's been red-tagged is on the left. The trailer that our employees work out of for the last four years is in the middle. And the bathroom is on the right, the public bathroom up at the cemetery. So as part of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Parks Facility upgrade, it would address the facility as well as the restrooms up at the cemetery. We've talked quite a bit about the Parks, Public Works Operations Center on Center Street. There's a couple of the renderings of the facility. Once again, need to commend the Public Works staff in really trying to work with the homeowners around the site, as well as the Neighborhood Association. They've made significant changes to the design to try to meet the concerns and wishes of the community, to reduce the impacts from the larger trucks, put some of the less intensive uses up on top in the upper yard. So we'll continue to move that forward. And as we stated earlier, we expect to have about thirteen point four million for that project by the end of this, the proposed biennium. Next, we've talked quite a bit about the Police and Municipal Court Facility. The picture on the left is waiting for getting to court, into the facility. On the right are some renderings of the potential options that are available to us to construct up at the Mount Pleasant Elementary School that we purchased. Once again, would invite anyone up for a tour of the facility, just to see how inadequate it is. We've doubled our population, we've doubled our police force in a facility that was never intended to serve as a police facility for this long. So, once again, continue to move this forward and hopefully be successful in September with the citizens. The Willamette Falls Legacy Project, we've talked quite a bit about this as well. We expect to begin construction in the summer of two thousand and eighteen. We have an event at the Oregon Museum of Science and Industry scheduled for, I think, Saturday, June third, unveiling the Riverwalk Design itself. So once again, a very important project for our downtown, for our community, not only from a public access to the Falls component, but from a habitat opportunity, the amazing history you can tell that's happened on this site and around this area, as well as the economic development investment potential being created.
Excuse me, just a question, a thought occurred to me. Would the improvement in that property, hush, it's my turn. Would the improvement in that property... Would the improvement in that property, will the taxes on that property go up at all?
Duh.
Or, well, I'm, well, and because it's, it's going to be.
Are you talking about the Riverwalk, or are you talking about the main project?
No, no, the Riverwalk itself specifically.
That's an interesting question.
Thank you very much.
We can certainly follow up with the tax assessor, but essentially, the partners have an easement over the property, so it's still technically tied to the property itself.
I'm just wondering if they could say, well, that's now municipal, you know, and they don't pay taxes, or are we gonna be able to get some small immediate return out of that?
Right, I would have to talk to the tax assessor.
Yeah, I haven't heard anybody mention that yet. Thank you.
And then last, we have an example of the Hazelwood Drive sanitary sewer project, providing needed, needed capacity to address that moratorium area, as well as, you know, improving those pipes by, so that we're not losing capacity in our system through infiltration that happens during large rain events up in that area. So we'll be completing that project over the next two years as well. So to conclude, the city commission goals and priorities served as the framework for this budget. I am proud to present a budget that supports these goals, maintains the tax rate below the maximum allowed, includes, and includes only inflationary adjustments to utility charges. So with that, we have to answer any questions. With that, we're gonna take ten minutes. Start back at the beginning in departments and ask your questions that way?
I could, that may have a process.
Huh?
If it's okay, we've got a process through that which follows, kind of the city manager gave the budget message in the courts of department. So the most effective way to approach this to go, the tabs in the budget documents that you have are labeled, and basically, you've got the general fund would be a good place to start. Of course, you can go anywhere else in the budget, but we go through the general fund, policy and admin, police, community services, each of those. So if we go by those tabs, we can go by departments and call up each department head as well.
I'd simply like to ask one question on the general level, and it has to do with one of the assumptions made, and being that we're a service organization at heart, as any city is. The forecast growth was eight and one-half tenths of a percent, which comes out to 291 warm bodies, people. Yet, the number of building permits for single-family residences to be issued is 460 as forecast. So my, my question is, have we underestimated the demand on our services? I mean, if we were to say that there's three people per household instead of one, we would've missed the mark by a demand of 500%. And maybe that's small in the overall scheme of things, but it's one of those assumptions for budgeting. I want to make sure that you're comfortable with it, and if you are, that's all I need to hear.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, and I am comfortable with it in terms of what our capacity to do. And I also appreciate that question because, as you know, we get some of our numbers from Port State University and some of those things. So going back and looking at those numbers wouldn't be a bad idea at all.
The other thing we do is work with planning and building, you know, we kind of know what's in the pipeline, and we project those out, and then we try to remain consistent. You come into the planning department, you go through that process, you get approved for land use, you go to engineering. So we've really tied engineering, planning, and building together in some of the forecasting out for the next, you know, two and a half years from now, where we're gonna be in terms of building permits, which really does drive a lot of those revenues on the system development charge, planning fees, building revenues.
I was just having trouble reconciling in addition of only 306 swarm bodies with building permits for 460 single-family residences and the demand for services, that's all.
Yep, and there's definitely a lag time in there on some of that.
Certainly, it's not instantaneous.
I have another general question before we get into any details about, were you finished, sir?
Yes, sir, I am.
The assumptions that we are making on growth in a few big areas, the, the Legacy Project, the Cove, perhaps the Rivers, Beaver Creek Concept Plan, things like that, that we are hoping that that's gonna increase our revenues through permits, through property taxes, through all of those things. And yet, in my experience with the city, unforeseen things happen. We have seen false starts so many times. We have a property owner, the Legacy Project, who cannot give us a vision, cannot project what he even wants to do with that property. We have seen the Cove, as much as I've been a supporter of the Cove for over ten years, start, stop, start, stop, start, stop. It just seems really bullish to me to be assuming that those projects are actually gonna be generating any income in this biennium. It's, it's just really optimistic. And I'm kind of an optimistic guy, but I'm also quite a cynic insofar as, what, what kind of a chance do we have that we really are gonna see some of that income?
I don't think very high chance at all, and we didn't include those. When we talk about significant projects coming in, you have the bond measure for Clackamas Community College, so they'll continue to make tenant improvements and improvements to that campus other than beyond the, what did I draw?
Technical.
Technical education building.
But we're not getting any taxes off of that, are we?
No, but we get revenues and SDCs off of that.
Yeah, okay.
The Willamette Falls Hospital Medical Building's coming in, the fire station will be coming in. We did assume part of Clackamas Cove Phase Two potentially over the next two and a half years. There is apartment complex, live-work units along Beaver Creek Road, additional development on First Street on one of the vacant properties, a potential hotel downtown, as well as potentially one of the police station, the Public Works facility, or a Parks building.
Okay.
And then our typical residential, single-family development that we've been seeing, the pickup, and those averaging upwards of 110 to 125 single-family units coming in per year.
Okay. Just don't want to look too, too rosy, you know, I.
Thanks, Eeyore. So moving on, is there, is there any other general questions?
We're on the general fund part of this, correct? So as I was walking through this whole budget, one of the first things I just kind of look at is what it was two years ago and what it is today. For instance, on the eternal, internal service charges.
Internal works.
Internal, but internal service charges, last biennium was zero, and we're at 1.4 now.
It's on, it's on page 29 of your folder.
Yeah, 29, I thought we were on that tab, so.
Thank you, Community Member Shaw, that's an excellent question, and that is, throughout the budget, when the city manager referenced that we had done updates to the chart of account structure of the city, we did some reclassifications. Throughout the budget, one of those, it's very obvious, but I should mention it now because of the question, is that we reclassified transfers out as internal service charges throughout the budget. And the distinction under local budget law is that if you, if a department does work for another department, for example, if community development does long-range planning work for the general fund, it's an internal service charge. If I were to do that work for an external customer, it would be a charge. Transfers represent more reallocations of funds that aren't necessarily for work provided. And so it's very consistent under generally accepted accounting principles and budget law, to use the definitions that we are now using. I think some of you are aware that we had this thirty-year-old chart of account structure, and so now, in the last cycle, we closed all the funds that were sort of excessive, and now we've really got things tightened down with the new chart of accounts and putting everything where they're supposed to be. But in looking at this biennium budget with the history, the other thing local budget law says, is you have to show the history where it was. So it just looks like a weird anomaly, but, but good catch on that one.
Use your microphone, Ray.
Well, if it's a stupid question, I don't want to be on the mic. All right, so intergovernmental, it's just so, it's so much less than before. And my question was, is it, is there less opportunities, or is there less personnel seeking those opportunities?
Do you have a page number?
Oh, seventeen. Well, I first noticed it with library, but that other, other sections have it higher, and then library showed zero or no. I think if it's zero or, or.
Is that intergovernmental?
Yeah, I just, because that's, that's, you know, getting opportunities from other, other agencies, correct?
Intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues are state-shared revenues,
Right.
which is basically, we're gonna talk about that, actually. I think we need to have our public here on that, the liquor tax, cigarette tax. The state allocates a certain share of those. But in addition to that, as you mentioned, there's, there's grants flow through that. So if we receive a grant from the state in one year for a big project, and then not in the subsequent year, there could be a fluctuation there.
Yeah, so I was curious as if it, if it, because I know there was somebody that did a lot of the checking out for grants and looking and stuff, and then she's no longer there, did that make a big difference in, in solidifying some of that, or?
Yeah, we've been very effective with grant applications in this cycle. For example, the Streetscape Project over Malala is a $3.8 million grant that we secured for transportation, which is huge and good. And then another one that comes to mind is community development. Laura Turway and her team have done an excellent job of applying for grants for affordable housing analysis and to help with the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan follow-through and some of those things. So I think we're doing pretty good on grants.
Yeah, it just seems, you know, half of what it was before proposed then.
I'm not sure I read it the same way, only because I went to page 29, Mr. Parno. And I looked at the, the general fund, and when I look at the change in intergovernmental transfers, it looks like it's down about nine percent. Is that, is that correct, or am I misreading that on page 29?
3.6 million versus 3.3.
Right, yeah, it looks like about nine percent versus.
Oh, okay.
Versus a specific department.
On, okay, so to cut, to circle back on page 17, intergovernmental revenues did increase by about $300,000. On page 29, I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Donnell, could you ask that question one more time?
When I look at it, it looks like the change is, and that's perhaps nine percent decrease.
Which line item are we talking about, intergovernmental?
Intergovernmental line item four under resources, general fund resources. If I compare 2015, 2017 amended to current proposed.
You know, let me just take.
Okay, I think, I think I'm, I'm reading it.
Are we good?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure either, Ray, so I'm asking.
It's just I'm seeing like, yeah, okay, I think, I think you're correct. It's not that, as far as I thought it was.
Again, I think that's fluctuations for grants, because the only two things running through there are the, the, the state shared revenues again, which is just the allocation. There have been slight reductions, so I don't want to make, I like to joke around about drinking and that kind of stuff.
Well, I just see with all the stuff coming up that there's more.
You know, my technician expert added one more thing, too, that I think is really pertinent. So that's a great question in terms of intergovernmental revenues. One more item that was in there, thank you, Maria, is that when the, I can't want to say this the right way. We had the, the measure that, that the voters approved on urban renewal in November was indicating a desire of the voters to close the urban renewal. That issue is still in court being decided. However, we've been advised by our attorney, and we're being safe in reducing any urban renewal expenditures other than debt service for tax increment financing in the interim while we find out that issue. One of the things the Urban Renewal District used to, did before was pay for their fair share of administrative costs and economic development. So now we're doing those services for free, if you will. So that's the reduction. Thank you, Maria.
Out of the general fund.
Yeah, they're alternately funded, they're not for free.
Right, correct.
Understood.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you had something?
Yeah, would this be a good time to talk about something in community services?
Why don't we wait till we get to community services?
Okay, I didn't know if it was part of the general.
I could flip my tab, are there any other questions on policy and administration? And then the police department, are there any questions for the police department?
Hang on a second.
I'm sorry.
So, under policy administration, are we still looking at a PIO? Yes. Public Information Officer for, to follow my own role? Yes. Okay. Or similar, yeah. All right, thank you.
And that, and that position is going to also be like a collaborate with the community as well?
Correct.
Like an ombudsman service?
No. No, this is more along the lines of someone to do actual interaction with public, with the press, write press releases, handle social media, yeah, all that stuff.
Not an actual volunteer coordinator?
No, no, this is more along the lines of having a person who is trained to be able to put the message out that the city wishes to put out.
Great.
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the, one of the things with this position is really trying to, I think we do a great job in the city of completing projects. We do some pretty amazing work, but then we never celebrate it, publicize it, talk about it, or put it out in the community with our citizens as to how we're using their resources, the funds that they're providing us to do work. So really focusing on how do we not only get what we're doing out, the information from the local government to the citizens, but also creating some type of a feedback loop within that. And so what exactly that, like, it gets called, community liaison, you know, it'll have a name. But, you know, it's really trying to increase through social media, media print, talking points, news releases, you know, what are those ways for engagement and information sharing?
For example, when we outsourced our billing and freed up all that space in the accounting department, we now have an additional conference room, I just found out about. It's been going on for two years, I just found out about that, and big savings. And so did we, actually.
So did we.
That's a good example. At a commission retreat, when, sometimes the departments do such amazing work, and we start to list them all out, it gets lost in the shuffle. But no, we had, thank you for pointing that out, we had a, the Utility Customer Service Supervisor, Marcy Barrett, has a checklist of things she wants to accomplish, and one of those was the big billing machine. And we outsourced the cost of all the utility billing, and by doing that, we save 15,000 a year on mailing costs because we are able to bulk mail through the service that we're using. So thank you for pointing that out.
And sold the machine.
And sold the machine for $9,000 online. Yeah, and, and, you know, throughout the, I can, I can share, the city manager sort of sets direction, all the departments do a lot of things like that. So his goal, I know, is he said, Wyatt, you know, we're gonna have this position, it's gonna go out and kind of sell all the great things we do. And he kind of had me thinking about that feedback group as well, to bring information for us to make better decisions, so.
And on the other side of that, there's also, and those of you who either follow Oregon City Chit Chat or Nextdoor, or Facebook, or all those things, is very often, there is a thread that shows up, and various amounts of disinformation are, you know, disgorged on these things.
You're so kind.
Alternative fact.
Example perhaps.
So one of the things that I've been talking about is to have someone to monitor those places so that when somebody says, you know, well, we didn't, you know, we didn't, what's going on at the Cove? How come nobody ever talked to us about, now they're building all this stuff, what are they doing? And well, you know, we talk about it all the time, we, you know, have informational meetings, and people don't show up. I know there is a big chain on Nextdoor right now talking about marijuana. Well, the time to talk about marijuana was last September and October, not now. Yeah, so I'd like to have somebody that can be monitoring those things and being able to respond with facts, not arguing anybody's point, just saying, here is what the facts are from the city's point of view.
When are they supposed to be on board?
We don't know. Working on, working on the job description, it's.
Great. Probably this year.
Yes.
We are.
But it's not going to be a neighborhood liaison, it's a PIO position, is that, yeah, okay. Because when I saw the description of it, that made me think that it was a neighborhood liaison. I just want to make sure that it's really clear, even not, not that we don't, couldn't use a neighborhood liaison, but.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
So what is going on with the replacement for Ms. Durfee? You're talking about maybe kind of a different, kind of a position there, so.
I think it would just be finding the replacement there, but really looking at the job description. You know, we've got, you know, a high performer, you know, the position, I think what the, the work that Ms. Durfee was doing probably exceeded what her job description was described as, so making sure that the position, job description is at least consistent with the expectation of myself for that, for that position in terms of being highly functional, helping with PowerPoint presentation. I mean, the amount of things that come into the city manager's office that don't really fit anywhere, require staff who can take smaller projects and run with them, and really looking for some of that in that position, more than just a 40-hour-a-week administrative assistant.
Or just hiring another overachiever.
Got one lined up?
Yeah.
We were lucky. So, anything else with policy and administration? So do you want to do that now, Wyatt?
No, I think we can, we can hold on that. What? Yeah, let's hold on that.
Okay.
And the police department, any other questions? So now we would rather community services, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, I thought that it would be good to have a little discussion about the cemetery and the Parks Office out there. I know that there is this little sliver of land that's right adjacent to the current building out there. And I think it's covered on three sides by city, or cemetery property and tombstones and, and, you know, there's a potential of someone buying that, or there's a, I don't know what the status of that is, but. But I was just wondering if you could have a discussion on this committee about what the potential would be of purchasing that land? And if it's even something that, you know, is in your goals as a, as staff?
Can I take a quick whack at this one?
Yeah.
You know, I think the, I appreciate the question in terms of identifying potential opportunities for land acquisition. I've been talking with Mr. Lewis. We do have funds set aside for property acquisition that are system development charge eligible, of which that potential property could be. I guess I'm not sure if it's better to have a discussion about potential land acquisitions now or in an executive session to identify the properties. I think it'd be, suffice to say that we have parks, system development charges that are set aside for land acquisition to, to meet parks' needs.
Generally speaking, it's not a good idea to talk about property acquisition in public, especially when we're talking about a specific parcel, because then the prices tend to go up.
Well, it wasn't necessarily, I, I was just wondering what, what the more of the master plan was for, I know we kind of talked about that. We went on site and you, it, you convinced me in, in about three minutes that you needed a kind of a building out there, but. If you wanted, we could talk about that at later.
You know, the G is out of the bottle.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I, I would join in that discussion, maybe from the perspective of, we're going to discuss a six hundred fifty thousand dollar line item for replacement of the parks maintenance building. And I would couple that to that brief discussion in general terms in that we're talking about one building, and I certainly agree it has no use in its current configuration. However, I also feel that the replacement is constrained by our current land situation and it's constrained on both sides. And I question if it would be wise to proceed on that at this point in time as opposed to, under the constraints imposed by trying to fit it between two buildings, as opposed to maybe wait and see where other developments occur. Then other than that, my concern with that specific expenditure is, I feel that we're a service organization first. I feel that our citizenry gets served first. I'm very respectful of what I was shown as far as, I certainly want people to find a place to work. But I'm also respectful of our citizenry and I see my park at Chapin and I see Hillendale in such disrepair. And my hope is that the parks department was, and we discussed this at our, our initial meeting, would set out a series of goals for must-do, immediate repair or removal or replacement, to like to do to long-term. And I question the allocation of six hundred fifty thousand dollars for a building, because knowing that the work, I'd like people to have a good place to work. And I understand the effects on the morale of individuals who work there. But I also understand that this is the kind of work that's not done within the confines of a building. So I'd, I'd, I'd almost like to discuss if we could meet some middle ground. I certainly think the bathrooms are despicable and they need to be improved. And I certainly want these, our staff members to have a shower and the ability to shower off in the event they run into either a chemical or human waste or anything else. But my, and this is probably a minority position, but I think our first obligation, if we can defer that until a more favorable time, which may involve what Commissioner I was speaking about, that could give us a building for fifty years instead of twenty years and service the needs of our community, particularly involving, I mean, walk your, walk your parks. There's devices there that should be removed, they're so deteriorated. I'd like to see a shift of the expenditures more towards servicing our, our citizenry than, than this building. So I'll couple those two discussions, because one is tied to the timing of the other, and I'll leave it at that.
Any of your members have any comments on that? Commissioner Shaw?
So, yes, we do have some, well, we have a lot of unfunded priorities for our parks. And I think, you know, in order to have a adequate staff trained and dedicated to work on those parks, we need to have them some, they have to have a place to go, to be able to have their meetings, to be able to, and especially if you look at the manager, maybe not so much on the staff load, the managers, supervisors, to be able to gather the folks and say, hey, this is where we're going with this. They can't do that right now except around a little, the desk in the director's office there inside that house. They sent a little cardboard, the car, car table chairs, and, and this is how we're going to lay this out. So, but, you know, and maybe Mr. Lewis will explain to us a little more in detail what that building is going to do. Because I think if we say no to that now, it will never get done. Because if we wait for another transaction, that maybe will do this. But right now, we have to provide these folks a comfortable setting to do their job. Otherwise, they're working out of their cars, they're working out of their trucks. And I think they need to have a place to repair. I think there's some repair going on there. And also these new bathrooms that you're talking about, yes, you know. So I'm actually for this structure, even though it's probably not exactly what these folks would like to have, but I think it's going to do for twenty years or so.
On, on the flip side of that, I think our, what's our expenditure for maintenance, three hundred thousand, three twenty-five?
Our expenditure for maintenance?
Our proposed expenditure.
System-wide parks per year?
Oh, for maintenance, so the expenditure for operations and maintenance is?
About a million dollars.
How much?
Million dollars.
Well, it's operations and maintenance, right?
Yeah, so, so we're looking at one, one point, oh, I'm sorry, just for operations and maintenance and personnel expenses as well?
No, I think what, I, I think what the commissioner's getting to is just maintenance. Forget about operations.
Yes. So you're looking at repair and maintenance services, a hundred and eighty-three thousand per year. Operations and maintenance and supplies, a hundred and forty-three thousand.
And for the committee, we're on page sixty-five.
So, total materials and services is five hundred and thirty-three thousand for the seventeen, eighteen proposed budget.
Okay, so, to get back to Commissioner Shaw's last comment, I'm of the opinion, and you've, you've all heard this before, that if we're going to build something, we need to be building for much longer periods than twenty years. That if we're going to invest in our community, then when we make that investment, we need to make it for a fifty-year timeframe so that we aren't coming back in another twenty years and going, hey, we got to build another new building. Or we don't have enough space, so we're going to have to, you know, put more portable trailers in, or something like that. So I, I think in, as we continue on in this discussion, we have some room in the military, and I think if we think something's important enough, then we can look at that as an adjustment to the budget.
Yes, I, I feel strongly that the constraint on the proper sized building, the fifty-year service building versus twenty is the current footprint that's allowable by the existing structures that trap it. So I'm, I'm in agreement with, you know, a fifty-year building versus redoing something in twenty.
So maybe we should ask Mr. Lewis if this is a fifty-year plan or a twenty-year plan. Maybe I was kind of misspoken there, but you are, you are looking at a fifty-year plan just for what these folks are going to do. Obviously, there's other things that go on up there at that site that maybe are going to need something different. But as far as what your staff and employees are going to do, is this good stuff, is for them for fifty years, or what do you think?
So the, the current footprint would be adequate for our, our current staffing levels for facilities, operations of parks and facilities. We did receive direction from commission at the work session that we presented and are working with a, an architectural firm to try to put together a phased approach using our current footprint and looking at other opportunities that might become available in the near future. So we are taking into consideration the best use of the funds that have been requested of the, the budget committee. And again, trying to look at how we can make the best use of the funds in the short term as well as looking at ways to develop the site in order to provide services in the long term.
Well, I'm not sure what your perception of the direction at the, our first meeting was, but I'll leave that to you to describe. My concern is if it's servicing current parks only, even if it's capable, our growth plan, we, we, as other sections of this budget say, we'll be bringing new parks on board. I, as far as holding a meeting, a meeting can be held anywhere. But again, I want to be respectful of our personnel, but I also want to be respectful of our citizens and our user groups and their children. And when I see this paltry amount that's allocated towards maintenance and I look at projects like, as you well know, the Chapin Park impromptu swimming pool that we had to fence off, or the situation at Hillendale, I think we owe it to our citizenry to possibly, if we can defer this and give you a short-term solution, which I certainly agree with bathrooms and showers. And maybe, you know, I'd invite the discussion to, to look towards improve, you know what these, what these forecast costs are on both those projects I mentioned. And they'll, they'll consume that paltry budget in a heartbeat. That's just my thoughts on it. I wanted to share them with everybody and open it up to discussion.
Mr. Gifford?
I'd like to chime in on the discussion and support Mr. Shaw's perspective about having adequate facilities for our existing staff. And I wouldn't say that, that spending money on a, on a facility to better support our staff is taking money away from our citizens or, or not providing services. On the contrary, I think that by having more adequate facilities, our staff can be doing a better job for our citizens. And I think that when our citizens see, if, if they would want to take a tour of, of what's, what that place looks like now, I think that hands down, people would say, yes, this needs to be improved. Does it need to be built as a fifty-year structure right now? I think that the plan is that it could be conceivably built right now for immediate needs with the potential for expansion. And a lot of buildings nowadays are being built with the potential for adding on later. So they could, so it could be built on the existing footprint, I think, with the, to serve the immediate needs right now while costs are cheap compared to where they're going to be. If we wait, if we drag this out for another five or six years, you know that the costs are going to be going up. I'd say the best bang for the buck is to get what we need now with plans of expansion.
Well, I understand that approach. As one who has built houses from the footings on up, but I don't think that's part of the provision. And I don't know if I want to get into the details of that. And I, I think the cost accrued with removing subsequent buildings to allow for expansion unless you plan to go vertical, I think they'd be prohibitive. But I just threw it open for discussion. My concern is servicing our citizen group first and providing some level of support for our people for an interim period until we can do this maybe to a longer term.
Commissioner Megelberg, do you have any input on this? Renata, you there?
Yes, I, yes, I am. I just had it on mute.
Okay.
I think we need to, I need to, we need to provide adequate facilities for our staff to do the work they need to do. And we need to invest in proper storage for the equipment that they use so that's not deteriorating faster than otherwise. So I also agree with the idea that you design it so that you build for current needs now and a way to efficiently and cost-effectively expand in the future.
Thank you.
I just, I never, I never hear anything about, so you're talking about providing for the citizens and you're, and other people are talking about providing for the staff.
No.
But isn't, that, that's, yeah, it's just that, that what you were talking about, it didn't keep on saying visitor, but so the restrooms would be, so it is for the citizens as well, so?
That component certainly is.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, is that if we could make it like, approach it like a fifty-fifty kind of thing. I mean, that's just my thought, is like having it be, be fifty-fifty, half for the, that it would, it would get a lot more support, I believe, if there was more like, like a waiting room, or, you know, stuff like that. I know that's deeper into the details. But if you design it in a way that it's more citizen-friendly.
I have no argument with that. My, my, I suppose my question is, where is the work of this type done? Is it done within the confines of a building? What percentage of the work is planning versus execution?
Right.
And it's not in the confines of a building. However, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to reach some middle ground where all user groups would be satisfied. If Phil were to come before me and say, you know what, I've got a plan to bring some parks up to a low, a minimum level of performance that takes care of all the safety issues, makes them usable, takes care of these pools that represent drowning hazards that we've had to place fences around. And I need that much money to do that, and then I want to pursue that. I'd like, see, funds are not infinitely available. It's an, it is an either-or proposition. I mean, somebody gives something up at the, at the expense of somebody else. So that's my, that's the discussion I wanted to encourage, and I can leave it at that.
And if, just for a couple of clarification points. So the, the facilities would, you know, a lot of the work is done out in the field, as, as you said, and I would agree. The facilities that we're requesting also are for chemical storage, for equipment storage, to improve longevity of the piece of equipment that we purchase. The facility does also include square footage for a facilities person to maintain all of the facilities within our system, which includes city hall, the new library, all the other facilities that we maintain. That position currently is housed within the property that is going to be taking a new home for the community development department. So that person won't have a proper space to store equipment, work on equipment, do their daily planning, meet with contractors. They will have a temporary site, which will be located at the community policing facility, which will also be eventually moving, and they again would be without a, a work location. So I, I think, you know, we've worked very hard to try to identify needs in the community. And again, I, I appreciate you looking at it from the community's perspective, because that's something that I do as well, is, you know what, we're here to serve the community. And when our parks don't look the way that we expect, I can appreciate your concerns with that. And those are also our concerns. And so making sure staff have the resources they need in order to provide the service for community members is something that we, we think about and, and hope that we'll be able to provide.
So in simplest terms, does your current budget provide for the ability to bring the parks up to a safe and usable standard?
We approach with, with safety and usability as, as the first point of consideration. I would not say that it provides our ability to address all deferred maintenance needs, unfortunately.
If you could take a look at page sixty-five in your book. We had talked about repair and maintenance services at three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. If you go down under capital outlay, you've got one thou- a million fifty roughly. Under capital outlay, that includes three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred to address needed deferred park improvements and capital maintenance funding, six fifty for construction of the facility, forty-five thousand for park replacement equipment, twenty-two thousand for software. Trails and pathway, pathways through the park system, including Clackamette, Chapin, Hillendale, Atkinson and Singer. Drainage issues at multiple park locations, including Chapin, Hillendale, John Storm, Park Place and Singer Creek. As part of the goal-setting process for the commission, you also identified, looking at exactly what you're talking about in terms of what are the deferred maintenance in the, in the community? And then also for us to come back over the next two years with revenue options available. What, what are those? Is it a increase to the, to the tax rate? Is it parks utility maintenance fee? What are these options of revenue streams that are reliable and that could be more dedicated to parks maintenance to help with that? And, and with a long-term plan to get to, you know, obviously we want every park and facility to be well above minimum.
Well, I understood everything you said, Tony. In fact, you elaborated even further than what's published in this report, I believe. But if you take out all the other numbers, you're still left with three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred for deferred park maintenance.
Out of what, one point two?
Yeah, I mean, six fifty here, four forty-five here, twenty-two here. I mean, the bottom line is, there's three hundred and thirty-two thousand. I think that discussion about the Chapin fix was, do you recall the number?
Uh, we're looking at probably around twenty thousand for the, the fix at Chapin.
Twenty thousand?
Correct.
That's the first time I heard that number. I heard numbers highly extreme of that until today, but, okay. Again, I, I just posed it out there because I feel my job is to represent the citizenry first. And suddenly postpone maintenance and minimum level performance or attractive level performance with existing parks, not to mention new parks that are scheduled to come onboard for two years. And I, I question that choice, and I'll continue to question it, and I don't want to tie up this board anymore on that.
I wasn't going to lay.
But I second that.
Thank you for the thought.
Mayor Neely, did you have a, a comment? If you'd come up to a microphone?
The reason I, I requested to speak is I am on the Parks and Recreation Committee Board. Board. I have a hard time seeing how you're going to build a facility for fifty years from now. It's going to accommodate space for the staff and so forth, you're going to have fifty years. You're going to have a lot of empty space. Or you're going to have a lot of space and everybody else wants to use it, but by the time you get to the point, it's not going to belong to Parks and Recreation because somebody else is going to use that space. I think the notion of building a facility now and making sure it's expandable is what's critical. That was the only comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, so, does anyone else around the table have anything more on this particular subject?
I wanted to know why there wasn't a improvement for the Waterboard Park Trail listed in this biennium. It certainly could use it.
I, I would say that's an excellent question. Waterboard Park is a, an active landslide zone. The, the hillside is moving very slowly. Asphalt that's there and replacement of that walking path would be far exceeding the funds that would be available in deferred maintenance. Additionally, it's a nature park, and I think the experience of the users is possibly a little bit different than users at some of our more developed parks. And so that was taken into consideration as we were putting together the funding proposal for this next biennium.
It's a climbing feature.
Did that answer your question?
No, in the meantime, it's a major liability for someone that could trip and fall and hurt themselves. It's pretty dangerous the way it is.
We're not charged them, they can't sue us.
Well, I understand that recreational immunity is going to go through the legislature, so hopefully we will not have to worry about that for very much longer.
That doesn't sound very good to the poor person that's broken an ankle or a leg tripping over some rock. That could have been removed.
What, when you're talking about the Waterboard Park Trail, what, are you talking about from the lookout down to the, lots of the armory?
Yes.
Well, because that really isn't a trail, that's just a road that we closed. I mean, I drove that road as a kid.
But we hiked it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I.
And now there's this walking trail.
Okay.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, I, I hiked that trail, but I know that that isn't necessarily a hiking trail. I know that's a road that's caving in on itself, that's been closed, and that people happen to use it. But I don't, I don't, I don't consider that something along the lines of like a Chapin Park where, I mean, I've, I've heard people, like parents in the community specifically mention Chapin, and so talk about the flooding and even so much on the track as well as the playground and, and other locations. But, but the other one, I, I think, I think that's seen as that's just part and parcel for that location. I don't know if that really solves anything, but you know.
So I'm going to get us back on track here.
Interest your own risk.
The thing about the budget is, is that we are setting forth the priorities that the commission laid out in, in our goal-setting session in, in January. So we take that charge and we give it to staff. And then staff comes back to us with this budget. And i- unless we're talking about a fifty-thousand-foot view of something, it's not really our responsibility to get down into the weeds as far as, you know, what trail we're going to pave this year or next year. So, you know, I, I, I get Commissioner O'Donnell's issue about the building in, in parks, and I, and I agree with him on, on many aspects of that, and I think that's a discussion we can continue to have going forward in the biennium. But as far as making any, is there anything in parks that anybody wants to make an actual number adjustment to?
And I suppose that's why I brought it up, because I was reading the rules on subsequent budget adjustments and what they require if they're in excess of ten thousand dollars or below. And that's why I brought it up for discussion today.
Is it ten thousand or ten percent?
Okay, just sort of clarify, the budget committee has some leeway in to make some budget adjustments, and as Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, when we come to the city commission for adoption of the budget, there's some limitations on what they can do in terms of percentages. In addition to that, local budget, or Oregon budget law allows for throughout the period of the biennium, we can certainly hold a supplemental budget process to make adjustments to the budgets, just it requires some advertising and things like that for interested citizens, but there's some, so those are the three. What we can do now, what the commission can do when we adopt in June, and then the supplemental budget process throughout the, the biennium allows a lot of flexibility.
I think that once again, we need to have this fuller discussion at a later time when we have a, a topic on an agenda to, to discuss where the funds are going to come from for deferred maintenance.
I think I could maybe help to close on that. Just to reiterate what Tony mentioned, Commissioner I, that's exactly, I think, from what I recollect from the commission goal-setting process, was identifying two functions. One was the short-term, what can we do in this next two years to help out with parks? And there were some commissioners pretty impassioned about what we can do with the existing funds. And I know, because Tony sat me down in his office, let's work with the department heads, make sure everybody comes in with zero based on the materials, save where we can, and we're going to hold fees, but we're going to do some things for parks, and those are the allocations you see. And in addition, your goals, the commission goals, they're included in the packet, include two functions. One is come back to the commission and talk about that maintenance facility, which we're committed to do still and have done. And the other is come back to the commission, as you're saying, Commissioner I, with a more prioritized list. I think Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned that just now, too, he'd like to see prioritization. What are the highest needs in parks? And then I can pretty much guarantee that if the, if the projects that we identify are going to exceed our current revenue capacity, so it's staff's role to come to you with a prioritization, and also some revenue options, and then ask for your help to be able to see where we want to go from there. And that is definitely going to be done in the next biennium, and that's your goals. Does that help?
Okay. Are we done with parks?
Yes, Mayor, and I, I did have a question over here from a couple of budget committee members about police. I wanted to go back.
Well, let's, oh, we, we already went past police, did we?
Yes, sir.
All right. Not to hear from Band today, but, you know.
Well, we have here. He's the only one who got an increase on his budget.
Yeah, I thought I was.
Nope.
Really lead for today.
So Chief Band, on page fifty-five of our budget here, you've hired, and this could be a misprint or something there, but you've hired a full-time information technology position, full-time. Half of the employee's time is dedicated to police issues.
So.
IT.
So, yeah, so actually what that, what, what that was is we pay for half of, so the city hired a new IT person for many reasons. A significant number of issues we were having at the police department as we were kind of problem-solving. As you know, we have computers in every one of our cars, they interact with a bunch of different, several different systems, and they have to have redundant securities, very complicated, and it literally would, had become probably the number-one issue for our officers. So one of the things we did problem-solving was we took fifty thousand dollars out of our budget, and I'm not sure where the rest comes from, but, so we use about half of that person's time and pay for about half of that person's time, and then the rest of the city utilizes that person, so it makes sense.
So it's essentially like a job share?
Yes.
Okay. The other question, unless anybody else had something on that. The other, one had, your, one of your goals here was to hire a new officer position to be a full-time homeless liaison officer. Can you explain what the duties of this person is going to be? I mean, it's probably just not strictly that, is it going to be worked into regular police duties, so maybe you could tell me what that is?
Sure. So it's a great question, and I like just talking about it a little bit because we're pretty excited about the potential of this. So just a little bit of brief, brief history. Two thousand and twelve, and I'm not going to put all of this at, at the door of Father's Heart, which everybody knows came to this community, but the reality is, they came in around in two thousand and thirteen, and just an example of how the landscape of Oregon City has changed. In two thousand and twelve, the police department took about a hundred calls for service dealing with homeless issues. Last year, we took about five hundred and seventy-five. Two thousand and eleven, we cleaned up eleven homeless camps. Two thousand and sixteen, we cleaned up eighty-five homeless camps. Nancy, who runs our code enforcement, does about five hundred hours of staff time just in those cleaning up of those camps. I will not go into the different issues that, between the business community, the different neighborhoods, it was initially just the McLaughlin neighborhood, but we've been seeing more and more concerns, fear, some warranted, some not, but a lot of issues. It, it literally has become the number-one livability issue in this community. Frankly, my own kind of position on this has initially, and for quite a while, was, when's this just going to go away? When's this going to go away? And it, it kind of dawned on me over time in dealing with Father's Heart, Terry Gant from Father's Heart, and seeing kind of what our own staff and what the community was dealing with was this kind of shift from when are they going to go away to, all right, they're here, what are we going to do? We've got to start, we've got to jump in the boat and start paddling, not just responding to the calls. A significant set of facts that came out recently, there's this place in, this point in time homeless count that happened in the county.
Which is this little rastor.
Yes. If you look, there's a lot of information in that, but what's significant, so in the county, we have, Oregon City has about eleven percent of the population of Clackamas County, and we have about sixteen and a half, seventeen percent of the homeless people that are in Clackamas County. In fact, if you look down that list of what that count says, the number-one government entity that is dealing with the highest number of homeless people is the city of Oregon City. In fact, unincorporated Clackamas County, I think is third or fourth. We had two hundred and two. Now, I don't know what that number specifically means. It doesn't, if you go and talk to people in our community, the business community, it doesn't really change where we are and what we're seeing. So the best way to kind of sum up this, the idea behind this position is what I've talked about before, about how the police department as, I don't want anyone to think we're ahead in terms of how our staffing is, but we've gone from critical to where we're starting to be able to do more than just react. Call nine-one-one and we'll show up and clean up the mess. Part of what the idea of really community policing is, is getting involved with the community, doing the response and doing that stuff, but also listening and trying to affect change before we're cleaning something up. Our homeless, the liaison, the guy that we have picked for this, I was talking to him about this and what he kind of envisioned his, his job. And his quote was, his plan is to not be the hammer fist of enforcement dealing with homeless issues, but to have people look at him as the resource guy who's fixing and dealing with and working with these homeless issues. And, and I don't just mean for people in the community who are mad about something or scared about something, but homeless people. And, and so some of the different things, and we've already been researching what other communities do, there's a lot of communities who have thrown a lot of money. I, I just read an article in the Oregonian, I think eight million dollars Portland is slating toward this problem. Some of the things that this, that, that his plan and our plan for him to do, there's a lot of, essentially, one community we went to, they have a logbook, and they literally know every homeless person that comes into their community. They have identified what services they need. Do they need mental health? Do they need drug and alcohol treatment? Or do they need neither of those, and they just need somehow to get at, say, social security that they already are able to get, they just don't have an address where to get it or to know how to get it. So sometimes people are able to get services, they just don't know how to get them, or they need a ride somewhere, something like this. So just kind of a list of some of the things that he would be doing. There, there are more services out there, some, than a lot of homeless people know about. Things like mental health. He's already talked to Hooper, which is a detox facility downtown. There's a place that I didn't even know existed in town here, I think it's called M-Seed, it's at one-twenty-four Malala Avenue, and they literally work on addiction stuff. Transition project that's been open for a little while up at the jail that we underutilize. His sister just went to work at Teen Challenge, which provides services, drug and alcohol stuff for teens. So he's identified all these services, and his plan is literally to start getting to know the homeless population and being a resource, starting to log them, if, if he can arrange a ride for somebody to get somewhere. Now, what this whole idea is, is rather than us just showing up and taking calls, kicking people out, is we're starting to be seen as a place for a solution. The, the other place that this is really important, if you think about all the money that's gone into developing things like downtown or the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, these are two different groups who have seen, I think, the largest impact in their communities. A lot of people who are just scared. And, and so what is that livability worth, and how do we fix that? This came actually from a conversation with parks, and Denise Kai was talking to us about, we need a park ranger, because the different impacts that we have seen in the, in the parks and the bathrooms have been really significant. The camps I was talking about, I, I don't even know what parks, what, what they have gone through in, in the man hours and woman hours of trying to clean up those parks. But so we started going through this, okay, how would a park ranger position work? Sometimes an officer would need to be there. Okay, it would probably be better to have an officer, so it kind of morphed into what this is. So I've talked a lot.
Yes.
I think.
No arguments.
The only thing I would say about this position that I haven't said, and I could talk a lot more about what he would be doing. But the, the second SRO position that, that we have, so you know how that happened, we've had one for a long time that we always paid for. The second SRO position, we took from current staff. We took a drug detective out of the drug team, put them in as a school resource officer with the school district paying us fifty-five thousand dollars a year toward that position. When we were talking about that and negotiating that, in our mind, we had our eye on this position, and so we were like, you know, let's take that fifty-five thousand, we're going to do this with current staff, put that fifty-five thousand toward, so we've, we've funded not quite half of it all in, but I think it's a pretty good bargain. Somebody's going to be kind of learning as we go what they do, but I think, I think it's.
So I'm confused, Chief.
Yeah.
It says hire a new officer position. Now, so are we adding a, a position, an FTE to the force?
Yes.
But you just said that you weren't.
Well, no, so with the second SRO.
Right.
We, we did not add one. With the homeless liaison officer, yes, we would be adding one. So to take somebody out of patrol, I can't just take them out, I got to hire.
So you didn't add a, a, a new FTE when you added the school resource officer?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question, is he carrying or?
He, he is a uniformed officer, he's going to look like every, everybody else.
Is he carrying?
He's a sworn officer, he's carrying a gun, yes.
So what's he?
Yeah, uniformed officer.
Okay. I just, yeah, I just, let's see, and that, let's see, I, I did the homeless count with Clackamas County years ago, and, and I, I, just having that uniformed officer approach them in the homeless situation seems a little dicey, but that's just.
Yeah, I, I think that's part of the thing, though, you know, it, right now, there are officers who are in the problem-solving mode, who have to get back in their car for the next nine-one-one call. And the, the whole idea that we have, I know that my cast, is that the homeless people stop seeing a nameless, faceless cop.
Okay.
They see, oh, there's Mike, because they've talked to him before, and the word's gotten out, and I saw him at Father's Heart, and this, this guy really has art for this, and so he's the right person for it.
Well, the other, the other side to that coin, Ray, is that we don't want to put somebody in the position of the Clackamas County Waymaster.
Right.
Being interacting with people and, and.
But Mike closed with, with, with the sign art. That, that was, I mean, I, I get the sign art thing.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there, is there another city that's used this model, that's had successes or failures, or are we kind of like pioneering the way, or is there other results we can look at, like case study?
That's a really good question, because most of the cities who are really doing something are much bigger than us. They have a lot of money, there's a, a partnership with business. What is significant about this city that I think a lot of times people forget, there's not many cities that are thirty-five thousand. What is significant about this city that I think a lot of times people forget, there's not many cities that are thirty-five thousand that are a county seat in a metro area the size of Portland. You know, Washington County has Hillsborough, Multnomah County obviously has Portland, so we are in kind of a unique position. I know Clackamas County is looking, after hearing we were gonna do it, they're looking at adding a deputy who is specific to the homeless issue too.
Did you say Seattle?
Salem.
Salem.
Salem has a few.
Okay, so.
And have they had success in their program?
Yeah.
That's just, I just wanna know, like, kinda, you know.
I can talk offline on that.
So just one quick little sum up here is there's a real connection between the homeless liaison person and this new SRO, because we have two hundred kids in our school district that are homeless. So they're gonna be doing this, so there's a lot of advantages to this.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, I have a quick question for you. I have to answer it to the general public. This part about we have to bring our facilities, essential needs facilities meet seismic standards by the year twenty twenty-two. And that looks like it's part of, I had to look up what essential needs facilities are, it's under the Oregon Resilience Plan of twenty thirteen. Did we find that building defective by virtue of examination by a structural engineer, or how did we find it defective?
Yes.
Yes.
Our own or someone else?
Yes.
I guess the only other thing I'd mention, just for looking forward, are there other buildings defined under that same plan? I don't wanna be surprised by it, so I'd encourage.
I think it's just public safety, fire, and nine-one dispatch, right? Those would be the only that would affect us.
Yeah, and there's some, there's some stuff with hospitals too.
Right.
That's not our deal.
Okay, are we done, please?
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
Library.
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 We're not required to answer questions. I think we've talked about the library last week for ten years.
It's exciting. Come on, we gotta ask for something.
All right, moving on. Community development. Questions, concerns?
Nope.
I think that community development has really done a fine job in streamlining the processes of getting things done and of improving the attitude of finding ways of getting things done instead of finding obstacles that people have to go through to get things done. And I hope that it's continued to be impressed on that department that the income side of our whole budget process is really dependent upon getting that development done. And I hope that that emphasis continues to be made.
Anybody else?
Well, I hope that, I don't wanna take this lightly, that we're kind of passing through these, like, library and community development, but we do appreciate all your assistance here and stuff, so.
Well, and I don't think it's a matter of taking things lightly. I think it's a matter of, over the last two budget cycles anyway, we've developed a system where it's pretty easy to understand what's going on. And I myself have a deep trust of our finance department as far as putting stuff together and making sure that, you know, all the numbers turn out okay. We have a senior staff that is incomparable, as far as I'm concerned, to anybody else in the state, so.
Amen.
You know, so it's not, it's not like we're rubber stamping this anything. All the work's been done and it makes it pretty easy to do this budget process. Planning.
Planning.
Going once, going twice?
Building.
So this is not, this is not where the funding is being saved for the Public Works Facility?
That's correct. It is not. That's the, that's the building department that does the inspections to ensure safe facilities, you know, the housing inspections.
Oh, so that was back in community development then?
Yeah, I can point that out.
No, it's not that.
That's one of the last parts.
We have shown them.
Okay.
The only thing, like I say, I kind of go back and look at last biennium compared to what proposed here. Last biennium was two-point-eight million and this is gonna be six-point-two million.
Where are you at?
Page eighty-five.
Page eighty-three.
Oh, middle line?
Yeah.
Thank you, Budget Committee Member Shaw. Yeah, as Tony had mentioned in the budget message, that is based on, and related to the questions that we had, based on the economic growth that we've had and the significant work in the building department to address the inspections for all of that work. And then accumulating those reserves during this positive economic time so that we're prepared, you know, as things change in the economy, the cyclical nature of the work.
Okay, see the pie chart.
Pie chart.
On the wall.
Thank you for the question.
Okay, Public Works.
Have we, the right-of-way work that we labored over these past few years to finally hammer that out and get our just rewards as we're deserving by us? Has that settled down now? Have we, I mean, I know we saved a lot of money in legal fees by not having to renegotiate those fees every time they were expiring on staggered schedules and so on. So has that, has that whole process pretty much settled down now?
The process has. We're still waiting a Court of Appeals decision with the county. But for the other.
The whiners, the what?
Yeah.
So the process, I think, has settled down and, you know, we have standards that are in place. And as franchise agreements roll off, we roll into the right-of-way fee system that we have set up.
And so assuming that the, that the court finds in our favor, will that significantly change our projections?
I believe so.
No.
So we're expecting to get our slice.
So the quick down, as Tony was mentioning, on the rights-of-way program. We had, for new budget committee members as well, we implemented some changes, basically, the rights-of-ways, all the structures, the streets and everything, and companies come in and they lay lines and put things through there. So the city commission recognized that, and Commissioner Ida's a big part of this, recognized that we didn't have a thorough rights-of-way management program. So we implemented that about a little over two years ago. And part of that also was bringing our rights-of-way user charges up to market. So all the other cities were charging electric and gas users of the rights-of-way, a certain percentage, we were below market, so we brought that up. Another significant aspect of that was the telecommunications industry that Eugene is an expert on how that works, and a lot of cities were properly and fairly addressing those costs with the users of the rights-of-way, and we implemented that. One last component that was originally brought up at that time, and the commission at that time had advocated for, was equitably charging users of the rights-of-way that provide internet service. That portion has not been addressed. The reason that that wasn't tackled at the time is because there was a court hearing between Eugene and Comcast, I believe, outstanding since that time. Eugene prevailed. Comcast appealed to the Oregon Supreme Court. Eugene prevailed. So there is an opportunity. That's something Tony has talked about with us, about a possible option for revenue, for looking at parks and that type of thing, that's beyond the scope of today. So the rights-of-way program is working very effectively. Our manager that's working in Public Works has caught up all the, before we had a big backlog of inspections in our rights-of-way program, all that's been caught up. He's got a very effective management program going for rights-of-way, and we're in solid position with the revenues. As Tony mentioned, we've got that court hearing outstanding. We also, Tony drove down to the legislature, prepared to testify because the county and some other folks had challenged, basically introduced legislation to remove city's authority to charge rights-of-way fees. So Tony was, yeah, Tony was prepared to testify, didn't, wasn't called to testify, but that was then held in committee and not moved out of the committee. So that's sort of silent in the legislature now.
So when are we expecting a judicial determination?
I'm gonna, you know.
It's gonna be probably a couple more months.
It's a little bit of a process for that.
Okay.
And then finally, of course, there's, if there was an initiative petition or something like that. We had heard that somebody filed at the state. So Tony has asked, he's been working with John Lewis, who's kind of the rights-of-way director, and asked to just follow up with the commission at some point. It's been a couple of years. So sometime in this biennium, revisiting the issue of rights-of-way and letting the commission know where we're at and seeing if some different changes want to, if the commission wants to take some additional things on. Hope that, that's general.
So let me add just a bit to that. So this is, and it's difficult to find new money. But this was actually new money for the commission and the city. What are we bringing in now a year? Ground numbers?
That's on the general fund under franchise fees. I'll look right now.
But when we first started looking at this, we figured, you know, maybe we had six or seven, maybe eight different utilities that were in the right-of-way, and it turned out that they were over forty-five. So, you know, as we started digging in and looking at that, so there were all these people that were using our, basically, our car for free. And so now we're gaining all that, and that, that part of that revenue is part of what's going into parks.
That's exactly correct, Mayor. So the total franchisees revenue for the proposed biennium, city manager proposed, is seven-point-six million dollars. That is the second, I'm not gonna say that, seven-point-six million dollars. And at the time when we brought the rights-of-way charges up to market, that generated an additional five-hundred thousand a year.
A year.
A year, which was dedicated by the commission, as the mayor said, to parks and economic development. So I really appreciate the way you said that, is we were, we were continuing to operate at baseline levels. And then by generating that additional rights-of-way revenue and dedicating that to parks, that's how we were able to hire that additional maintenance position and have the funding for the deferred maintenance that's been identified in the last biennium and this biennium for the Chatham Park improvements that Tony talked about.
Well, since you mentioned parks and opened that up.
I didn't open it up. I closed the parks discussion a while ago.
Yeah. And I think, well, I know I asked you this question earlier, Mr. Parnell, but I still wanna get very clear, because when citizens talk to me and they say, we have so many parks, and I have heard that we only have three people doing all the maintenance on those parks, and yet on page sixty-one, it shows the FTEs of park and cemetery maintenance at ten-point-three. That's a far cry from three people doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Budget Committee Member Gifford. I really appreciate that question because I had a chance to talk with Tony and Phil about exactly that because you'd asked me that before, and I really appreciated that. So we have approximately six dedicated parks staff in the budget. And then about half of that is part-time help in the summer, because, you know, the weeds go crazy. So that's the amount in the budget, six. We had some vacancies, and I'll be very blunt. One person left and he was a stellar performer. Phil was kind of walking me through this, and I knew him, Austin, stellar performer. And he said, oh, my gosh, this job's kind of overwhelming, and he, I can't remember where we went, but, you know, probably wrong. But he said, I've got a little better deal going somewhere else. And that involves, and I'll keep it short, is, you know, you're a parks maintenance worker and you come in and you have to find out what you're gonna accomplish in the day, especially during the growth period. Boom, you get a call, you need to come fix this restroom because there's horrible things that occurred in there overnight, or.
They burned down the playground.
Yeah, the playground was burned down, and they're really sort of, I throw it in with a lot of that stuff. But to answer your question very specifically, what you were hearing was, we had a vacancy. It's a little, it's probably too much information.
I thought you said you were gonna be short.
But we, yeah.
Sure it is.
So we had a person pass away and another one left, and we were down to three staff. And the parks director just met with us and said, can we get some additional staff in for the summer period? So the difference between what's budgeted and we had reduced down to actual staff.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, on engineering.
And for what it's worth, Public Works does encompass engineering, transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater, and system development, if that's helpful.
My part in engineering, but I know that they had a system development charge workshop, I believe, last week. Are we anticipating any changes or increases to systems development charges?
So the question was, we had a, we had a follow-up open, a workshop with interested citizens and business community members about our system development charges, primarily focusing on transportation. The Public Works Department's currently working on their stormwater master plan, and out of that'll come a rate study, which will have recommendations for new fees and system development charges potentially. And I would imagine they would be higher than the current levels, which are extremely low. So I would imagine the commission will see that and make a determination on that over this biennium. We're also looking at the transportation system plan, trying to look at, you know, the methodology behind how we create the system development charge. And that will also be bringing back to the commission at some point. And so the decision will be made at that point, whether to raise those fees and those charges or not during those work sessions and public hearings. But I would certainly expect stormwater.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So are we done with transportation? Okay, sorry, transportation, here we go. Okay.
Excuse me. And I meant to do this a few weeks ago, and I apologize, and I will still follow up on it, but I wanted to send the commission a copy of an article out of The Economist magazine a couple of weeks ago, all about parking. And it was fascinating, fascinating study. It was a global look at parking and what an asset parking is. And if you thought that rights-of-way was an asset that was being undercharged, you might consider parking as well. That is a, that is a, that is an asset that I think that we are undervaluing. And a couple of interesting statistics, I'll be brief. One is that a vehicle spends ninety-five percent of its time stationary. Only five percent of a vehicle's life is actually in motion. So you've got, you've got a demand on that. The other point was how much time and traffic is generated by people driving around looking for parking spaces. It varies from culture to culture. They found one town in Germany, seventy-four percent of all of their downtown traffic was people driving around looking for a parking place. Why? Because parking was so cheap. Just a thought, and I'll pass that article along, but the bottom line is, I think that we could be considering the rates that we charge for parking.
Did you attend the first session of the transportation study for the Limber Falls Legacy Project last week?
I was unable to.
Ah, so all that was covered in that first session?
I got different reports from that. I had a family member attend that.
Okay, well. All right, moving on. Anybody else on transportation? And we're on to water.
Actually, the only thing, when you say manage Oregon City elevator service and maintenance, you mean manage the contract that, not doing, because you gave the contract.
That is correct.
Okay.
So questions for water? I have one. Who's gonna do this? It depends what the question is. I thought you were a roads guy, Martin.
A little bit of everything.
A little bit of everything.
Jack of all trades, expert of none.
Especially tonight.
Okay, so we purchase our water from South Fork Water Works, right?
Correct.
And how is, how is that metered? So we have a, is there a separate pipe that goes from South Fork to Westland, or does it get metered through, or how does that work?
There's a communal pipe that comes out of the plant and then splits just around Redland Road over there by Anchorway.
Right.
And then there are master meters that determine how much of the feed is going to Westland and how much is going to Oregon City.
So the Oregon City stuff goes up to the Division Creek Pump Station and then out from there?
Correct.
So that water, we pay for no matter what, right?
Minus what's deducted for other master meters that are scattered throughout the city for third parties.
Right.
So we pay basically the wholesale rate regardless of what we consume or what's lost in the system.
And there's, the lost in the system is the thing that I'm getting to, so if our.
Thought that's where I was headed.
So if our sewer pipes and our water pipes are in that seventy-five to a hundred-year-old range, can you estimate how much?
Water loss?
Water loss we have?
We actually do have an estimate for the estimated water loss. Now, I will say that since we got that initial estimate, we did determine that there was some water consumption by other third parties that wasn't being properly. some water consumption by other third parties that wasn't being properly tracked, but our last estimate for water loss within the overall system was eleven percent.
It's a big number.
Not relative to other agencies of our size, we've actually just finished a water audit with the state, and one of the things that came out about that is that we determined, we, we thought it was, you know, a really big number, and we're actually doing better than some of our partners.
Okay.
That's all.
Mr. Gifford.
Is that, is that water loss due to stuff, or is that loss to holes that were tight?
All of the above.
He said all the above.
But you'd say the majority of it is, is leaks.
Majority of it's, yeah, leaky system. We do do leak detection throughout the city every year, we try and do a cycle where we're trying to get around, within every five years, we will have completed a route of doing leak detection for the entire municipality and our entire system. And what we do with that leak detection, it basically sets up either our maintenance practices or ICP, CIP practices for the subsequent budget years.
And I know, I, I just went to the United States Conference of Mayors Water Council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and then I'm going to the American Water Association meeting in June, and looked at a couple of different systems that allow you to, to kind of wake up and look at the thing every night, or three o'clock in the morning or whatever, I'd be interested to see if, because no one had any costs, so I'm, I wanna see what costs are, but if we were able to implement a system like that, would it be cost-effective for us to implement that in order to find leaks and shut them down? And so I, I still wanna do some more research on that.
What is, what does that eleven percent translate into, like wholesale dollars?
That's a number that I couldn't speculate at, I couldn't tell you, it's probably a question for Wyatt. If we had the total gallons or total units, and then we could work that back.
I'm just wondering if we'd be more cost-effective to address, like deferred maintenance earlier to avoid those costs, or if there's an offset one way or the other, if it makes fiscal sense to be a little more proactive or not, if that doesn't pan out or does.
So the water capital improvement master plan basically outlines the majority of our leaky pipes are older system, and identifies several portions of, of water mains that are in need of replacement. The Southland Lock Road is one of those big projects that we're gonna be trying tackling this year. One of the big projects that we just finished successfully was the Fifteenth Street Water Main, getting that replaced. So we, we do try and invest our dollars where we know where the biggest problems are.
But one of the big problems with that particular piece is that if you got water leaking, it's not just the water going away that's the problem, it's the undermining of whatever else and, you know, that's where sinkholes and other kinds of things.
Well, that's what with all the landslides and the rain and everything, like, what does that do structurally versus just on the finance side?
So the, the magnitude of the water that we're, we're losing, I would not say is in catastrophic failures, it's pinhole leaks, little gasket leaks, that you have water that's just going off into the system somewhere, and doesn't cause these catastrophic voids or water main failures that you traditionally see, those are the easy ones to spot and fix.
Yeah. You guys are over thirty feet in the air.
You and I have both been there.
Yeah.
So, but it's that, the small minor leaks that are in the system, sometimes they're, they could be on a main, they could be on the lateral that's just feeding an individual meter. You have to remember, we have thirty-two thousand residents in this city, and eleven thousand individual services, so it could be any one of those.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, regarding rates, from a larger perspective, we pay for our water, as you carefully point out, sir, that we want our citizens to have all the water that they need. We do also want to discourage them from wasting it. And I don't know how, how much serious concern has ever been given to a structured usage rate where if you use more water, you pay a higher rate, not just that you pay more for your water, but it would be at the same rate. If you conserve water and don't use as much water, your rate would be lower.
Like a progressive water bill?
A progressive water bill. I know that other communities have done that, I don't know, have we ever given that any serious consideration?
Yes, thank you, Budget Committee Member Gifford. So as part of the rate modeling that we did related to the water master plan about three years ago, when we went back to the, the citizens and asked for an amendment to the, to the charter, if you recall that, we did a pretty significant analysis. We, at that time, determining, John's not here, or the rate modeler, you know, John Gilarducci's not here, but we determined that, Gilarducci sort of gave us some indication that our system was fairly allocated now, and we had some discussions about doing additional work for a rated structure like that. The problem, or structured rate like that, I think one of the challenges we ran into with the three percent cap was that that was our primary issue, that our, our rate challenges exceeded, it made it difficult for us to think about things like conservation when we were behind the curve, and the ability to capture rates that were sufficient to cover the system.
Because we don't have the ability to really penalize people for wasting water.
I think you're right about that, yeah.
And that's really a policy discussion not to be had at the Budget Committee level.
But...
Thank, thank you for your input, sir.
It's aired.
Moving on, wastewater.
No good question.
Well, it's, I don't know if it belongs to the budget, it just, it says, it's just an accomplishment, I just want clarification. So received one hundred and fifty-one...
Page?
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, one hundred? Received one hundred and, one hundred and fifty-one requests for service, completed two thousand one hundred and ninety-three work orders. So what's the difference between request for service, I thought request for service ends up as a work order, so how's the work order two thou, two thousand, what's the difference?
So not every request for service generates a work order.
Okay.
Several, you know, portion of them are simply explanatory questions or requests for information, and we don't need to generate a work order to try and track that time, there's no materials or time associated with that.
So is a work order also something internal as well?
A work order is anything where there is a cost associated to the city that needs to be captured. So a work request could come in through an individual, thereby necessitating us to do work, which would require a work order to track that work. Work request could come in that doesn't require any work, it's me or a member of the staff asking, answering some questions, and there's no need to track that.
Yeah, so the one hundred and fifty-one request is so low to the two thousand, you see what I'm saying, it's like two thousand.
And you'll see that, that statement is actually in each of the individual divisions. We put in there how many work requests we've received from citizens and how many general work orders are. Now, several of the work orders, we generate internally.
Oh, okay, so that's why, that's why, okay. And then one thing can lead to another, you might have another work order, okay.
And ninety percent of our work, if we're doing it right, is preventative maintenance, and that's not gonna have a citizen calling us to say, "Hey, come do preventative maintenance." That's why the numbers seem much higher on the work order side, because we still have to track all that preventative maintenance as well.
Okay, that makes sense, and then I had one more, so sorry.
Go ahead.
So with the water infrastructure, saying there's no reserves set aside at this point for, you know, for, for things that happen, that, is that correct from what I heard before?
No, we have a contingency for, for emergency capital issues.
Oh, okay.
For instance, last Fourth of July, we blew, no, two years ago, it turned out not to be us, but there was a, a South Fork pipe blew down on Anchorway. So we have money set aside in the budget to deal with an emergency like that. What, what Wyatt and Tony are talking about is, is we have an extensive system of pipes that are between seventy-five and a hundred years old that we need to replace, and we don't have the rate structure available to be able to do that in a timely fashion, and that's one, that's the discussion that the commission...
And so my question, because Portland had such a huge thing with this, about party lines, that might be something for an off. About part, you know, party lines? So the, it, one person's thing connects to another, and then it goes to the, so is there any for, I'm just thinking of residents, if something happened and that cracked, have you heard, heard of that, it's called party line, or, that's what they call it?
You're talking about sanitary sewer, and the big thing in Portland was they're, they were, they were required by the feds to separate their stormwater and their sanitary sewer.
Oh, okay.
Because of the combined sewer overflows they were getting on the, on the Moline River.
Oh, okay, yeah, I just wanted to, that, it's not the same thing, okay.
Okay. Stormwater. So we, we do not have a separated storm and sanitary system, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do? Okay.
The mandate that you mentioned about the city of Portland, everyone had to do that.
Oh, okay.
But it was on the citizens' debt. It was, it was weird, because, because I had somebody in, in the tourism department...
Use your mic.
He was asked to pay, and then other people were saying no. So, okay, sorry.
So we do have a few party lines for sanitary service within the city, but they're minimal in comparison to the total number, and it's basically where one or, you know, two or more properties are sharing a lateral on the backside of the curb, on the private side of the curb.
Okay.
Before the lateral connects into the sanitary main.
And that's not, the, the city isn't involved in changing that or fixing that or anything?
Depends on where the location is, it's a case-by-case situation.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
Anybody else? Okay.
It says here that they maintained seventy-five detention ponds and mowed seventeen drainage ditches and biothills. If a subdivision is required to do a detention pond, does that mean that the city then maintains it somehow, not the property owner?
So the detention ponds during, during the initial development, the developer's responsible for maintaining it for the initial two-year warranty period. After that warranty period expires, under the new stormwater code, the detention pond is to transfer over to the city for eventual maintenance. This was a new change that we put into place about two years ago, and what necessitated was, we were finding out that several of the HOAs that these were being handed over to were not maintaining the ponds. What that does is it compromises the overall integrity of the stormwater system, so the city made a conscientious decision that we were going to take it on after the warranty period expires, because then at least we know the maintenance is being conducted and that we're complying with our federal permit for stormwater management.
Dan, is your question, Commissioner?
Yes, I'd like to.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? System develop, uh, yes, system development. Does anybody really wanna talk about fleet services?
Come on, that's my favorite.
Why are you here?
All right. Well, then we're...
Mayor, under, yeah, under the other tab, starting on page one nineteen, is the, there's the Community Facilities Fund that you were asking about, which has the reserve fund set aside for the Public Works Operations Center, Community Safety Building, one nineteen, right after the other tab.
Okay, all right, okay.
And I would just point out that, well, no, that's good, if there's any questions, Subsequent to that is the Equipment Replacement Fund, on page one twenty, where the city does really an excellent job of being thoughtful about setting aside funds for future replacement of equipment. And then on pages one twenty-one and one twenty-two is some discussion of the Utility Customer Service Fund, those are the folks that do all the billing and answer customer support calls, the folks that save us a lot of money on outsourcing. And then finally, on page one twenty-three is the Debt Service Funds.
Okay. So we have reviewed the budget, I, I see we skipped a, a spot here, we have to have a public hearing for state revenue sharing, so how do you wanna do this, Mr. Parnell?
I'm happy to speak to that, if you wanna open the hearing, or let me give a presentation and then open the hearing. Thank you, Chair, Mayor, and members of the committee. So Oregon revised statutes two twenty-one, seven, seven, zero, just outlines how the state allocates state shared revenues, which is basically the liquor tax. And it's a, it's an allocation based on a couple of population formulas, and there's some complexity in there, but as part of the law, we're required to hold a public hearing on the uses of that money. So I want to tell you what we're doing with it. In fiscal year ended twenty eighteen, we have three hundred and ninety thousand dollars allocated to the general fund for general purposes, police, parks, economic development, and so forth, same as last biennium, and in twenty nineteen, that amount is four hundred and four thousand dollars. So I'm required to say that by law, and then if anyone from the public would like to comment on those uses, if they have any questions about it, we would take that comment, then close the hearing, and I have a motion at that time.
Okay.
What can you say?
What? We're, we're on eight A, the public hearing for state revenue sharing.
On the agenda.
We're on the agenda, Commissioner Minkelberg, just talking about state shared...
Can you talk to the budget document?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment? Mr. Gifford?
How is that money being spent?
So the liquor tax is dedicated for general government services, police, economic development, parks, those functions.
And how is that distributed within them? I mean, is there a percentage?
It's in the general, it's in the general bucket, so basically, when you look at the police budget and the parks budget, those are the expenses, and the revenues going into the savings account are the property taxes, these intergovernmental state shared revenues, those franchise fees, and they kind of equal out.
I guess I'm not being clear. If, if we receive four hundred plus thousand, how much of that goes to police, how much of it goes to parks, how much of it goes to...
Those amounts aren't delineated.
Yeah, let me answer that question, so...
So they're fungible?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Parnell, as we...
Hold on.
...receiving the marijuana fund, which is defined by the...
Microphone, microphone. Hold on a second, okay, so let's, let's deal with this thing first, and then, because I was already gonna, I was already gonna ask that question, but is there any further comment on, for the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing.
And then if the, the committee, if a member would like to move to approve the uses of state shared revenues as included in the budget.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner I, seconded by a member, Gifford. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. So now, to Commissioner Shaw's question, which I was prepared to ask, is the state isn't doing the same thing with, with marijuana as they're doing with, with liquor as far as the way they're taxing. So we only get the local tax, and we don't, we don't share anything from the state as far as the other, so, so the county can impose a tax, the cities can impose a tax, and the state imposes a tax, and those, those taxes all stay with their respective agencies, right?
Correct.
Okay. And what do we anticipate, or have we, have we tried to guess what, what the revenue's gonna be?
I'm glad you asked that question, because it's a bit of a kick. So, and there's some good news in the budget, so Tony and I and Marius sat around in Marius' office, and we, we'd, I wanna, I'm gonna say this really quick about our city manager. Sorry. Our city manager...
You know what's funny, is any time somebody says they're gonna be really quick, they're...
I'm gonna be quick right after this statement, but the city manager that I've worked for now, Tony, is the best with numbers that I've ever worked for, and I've worked for quite a few. And not only that, but he's very good with planning and, and the political nature of things, and I, and furthermore, if you'd asked me, and I hope nobody, my former workmates hear this, but if you'd asked me planning directors, and the fun I used to have in talking about finances with the planning directors, oh my goodness, so it was just such a joy that Tony would be ahead of me in the game a lot of times on the budget, say, well, what, you know, here's how, so we're sitting in that office, and he says, well, pulls out his phone, you know, and I figure, let's Google and find out what an ounce goes for. So we're doing all this stuff, and it was just, it was just kind of a funny exercise. But in any event...
You know, Google tracks that.
Yeah, I, yeah, we did some quick, we did some quick math.
Commodity tracker.
So here's the, here's the punchline to that, is we didn't, we didn't, the mayor is absolutely correct that we've identified that the state is not doing any shared revenue. The city has the commission and the city manager put in place that three percent tax, and the voters voted on that. So when those businesses go into effect, we have an agreement with, or I think it's Oregon, no, the Liquor Control Commission, to collect the tax on our behalf, and that'll be remitted to the city. That is not included in the budget, so that is an example, hopefully some funds that will allow us to do some positive things in the next biennium, and we'll let you know as soon as that.
But you still didn't answer my question, how much was announced? Did you guys, did you, did, did, do you, do you have just a scientific guess?
Yes, I do. So Ryan did an analysis, and he was actually pretty thorough about it, looking at what other agencies were receiving, and it was two hundred thousand dollars, but you can't, of course you can't hold me to that, because businesses are kind of formulating now. And we have currently, is it four, four approved business licenses in accordance with the vote of our citizens that allow it, four approved business licenses for marijuana businesses.
But there are more in the pipeline.
There are more in the pipeline as well.
And are those funds earmarked for anything in particular, the general fund, how's that?
They are not, that'll, that would, that would qualify as an additional revenue source that we'll talk about, and it's not included in this budget. Two hundred thousand dollars, Mayor, was the figure that we guesstimated.
That's, that, per year?
Correct. Correct, per year, right, right, fair enough.
That may drop.
There's a lot of weed.
That may drop.
Studies have shown that the more available it is, the lower the prices go.
My understanding was that on April twentieth, those numbers were really high, but let's...
Oh, gosh. Sorry. You're killing me here. All right, I, I think we can safely assume that you're probably somewhere in the ballpark there. And I think actually the numbers will probably go up some. What happened in Colorado, it tended to go up for the first couple of years, then it leveled off and the players shake out and all those kinds of things. So we'll see. I know that's already been happening in Washington a little bit. So a- as it come, as the industry turns into two tiers, you're gonna have your craft brewers and you're gonna have your Coors and your, you know, Bud Lights. And, and that's the way it's gonna shake out. Okay.
To be determined.
So, we passed your, uh, state revenue sharing thing, right?
Correct.
Okay. So all we have left is, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen biennial budget in the amount of one hundred and ninety million, right? Nine hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars before to the City Commission for Adoption.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Member Gifford, seconded by Commissioner Idd. Is there any discussion? I, do we have to, hey, Katie? Do we need to do this by roll call? Then call the roll, please.
Committee Member Gordon?
Aye.
Committee Member Shaw?
Aye.
Committee Member Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Committee Member Christopher?
Aye.
Committee Member Johnson?
Aye.
Committee Member Idd?
Aye.
Committee Member McCall?
Aye.
Committee Member O'Donnell?
Aye.
Committee Member Gifford?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, uh, the last thing we have to do is approve the general operating tax rate of four dollars and four point four zero nine per assessed, thousand dollars assessed value for fiscal years ending twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Member Gifford, seconded by Member Christopher, sorry. Good old what's-his-name. I did, I did it to O'Donnell the other day too, sometimes he just slanks out. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Committee Member Gordon?
Aye.
Committee Member Shaw?
Aye.
Committee Member Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Committee Member Christopher?
Aye.
Committee Member Johnson?
Aye.
Committee Member Idd?
Aye.
Committee, Committee Member McCall?
Aye.
Committee Member O'Donnell?
Aye.
Committee Member, Member Gifford?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Return. Thank you.